And welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the April 3rd Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. I'll ask our county administrator, Mr. Krupp, to take the poll.
All right. Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Here. I said, "Poll in its role," so there you go. Getting used to saying that word. Uh, well, it's now time to stand and join with me in the Pledge of Legions.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll announce that the board will convene as the Housing Authority Board for this first item. And to introduce the Housing Authority Commissioners, Paul Reynolds, in addition to the board members here today, Commissioner Schrader is excused. So, Mr. Krupp?
Yes, we have a consent agenda for the Housing Authority, and I'll invite the clerk to read the consent agenda for you.
Okay, there's one item. It's approval of Resolution 1904, Housing Authority Fiscal Year 2014 Annual Plan.
All right. Do the Commissioners want to remove this item or pull this item for later disposal? I'll ask Commissioner Reynolds for a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
So, the motion has been made by Commissioner Reynolds, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to do the poll.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Passes 5-0. Thank you. Yeah, "Yes" is the answer. I should've said that first. Third things first here. I'll announce that the board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Reynolds, thank you. I know we don't take much of your time. If you have some free chocolate in the basket out in the hallway.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have a presentation.
Yes, we do. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month in Clackamas County, and I'm going to invite Erin Dean with our Office of Children, Youth, and Families to come up and start the presentation. We do have a number of guests here that she will introduce to speak with you as well. So, Erin, please.
Hi. Um, thank you, Chair Ludlow.
Microphone on there?
Is this on?
The green light?
Yep.
Oh.
I'll speak a little bit louder. Thank you, Chair Ludlow, and good morning, Commissioners. My name is Erin Dean from the Department of Health, Housing, and Human Services. I work with the Children, Youth, and Families Division. We're here today to bring awareness to the child abuse prevention services that are here in Clackamas County. Preventing child abuse and neglect is a responsibility that depends on involvement from people throughout each and every community. According to the 2012 Status of Oregon's Children's Report, 5,008 reports of child abuse and neglect were made in Clackamas County in 2011. Fifty-two percent of those reports were assessed, and 20% of those assessed reports in our county were founded abuses of neglect, cases of abuse and neglect. Just under, that would make that just under 1,000 cases. If we review those cases by age, we find that 21% of them were 13 years or older. Thirty-six percent were between the ages of 6 and 12, and 43% of those, about 420 cases, were children five years or younger. And that's just in our county alone. 614 children in our county have been in foster care at least once in the past year. Whether suffering neglect, harsh physical punishment, threat of harm, sexual abuse, or psychological trauma, the children who survive carry the scars of their abuse for the rest of their lives. Research shows that child abuse and neglect not only directly harms children but also increases the likelihood of risk of behaviors such as criminal activities, substance abuse, academic failure, and health problems such as heart disease and obesity. We know that child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. The majority of child abuse cases stems from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. In our community, effective child abuse prevention programs have partnered together to create a continuum of services that makes sure families have the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment. Some of the successful programs and initiatives in Clackamas County include our Healthy Families of Clackamas County Home Visiting Program for First-Time High-Risk Parents, the Clackamas County Multiple Disciplinary Team, which includes representatives from the Sheriff's Office, the District Attorney's Office, Victims Assistance Program, the Oregon Department of Human Services, and other county agencies. Includes the Children's Center, which supports and conducts medical assessments of children who are suspected victims of abuse and neglect, our Family Stepping Stones Relief Nursery, Oregon Child Protective Services, a Safe Place Family Justice Center, the establishment of the Homeless Children's Strategic Planning and Implementation Committee, the Family Education and Support Network, Parent Resource Web Page, and our Clackamas County Children's Office, Sheriff's Office, Child Abuse and Domestic Violence Summit. As a program manager for our local Healthy Families Program, I'd like to take a brief moment to tell you just a little bit about our program and then introduce some other community partners here to talk just a brief moment about some of their programs. Healthy Families Oregon is a statewide child abuse prevention program. Oregon is one of only six states in the nation that has a statewide system accredited by Healthy Families America. And our local program here in Clackamas County serves about 200 high-risk first-time parents every year through home visiting services. And most of the parents that participate in our program were abused or neglected as children themselves and currently struggle with issues such as poverty, homelessness, substance abuse, domestic violence, depression, mental health issues, and/or teen parenthood. We believe that all parents desire to be great parents and that they want their children to be happy and to live a life free of abuse and neglect. Our home visitors meet weekly with families in their own homes to provide families with the tools they need to make better parenting decisions. Research has shown that families involved in our program are two and a half times less likely to abuse or neglect their children than families not involved in our services. Our program changes lives of our most vulnerable population, and it plays a big role in our county's efforts to prevent child abuse and neglect. So, at this time, I'd like to invite some of our community partners up to just say a few things about their programs as well. I'd love to start with Kevin Poppen on behalf of the Sheriff's Office and our District Attorney, Mr. John Foote.
Good morning, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners, Mr. Krupp, and other members of the community here today. My name is Kevin Poppen. As she mentioned, I'm assigned to the Investigations Division of the Sheriff's Office and representing Sheriff Roberts today on behalf of the Sheriff's Office. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak on such an important issue as child abuse today. And in 2013, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office detectives, that's just a detective section, which is a small group of child abuse investigators, investigated over 178 cases of child abuse. These cases ranged from rape, sodomy, sex abuse, criminal neglect, and child fatalities. Of these 74 cases, referred to the District Attorney's Office for consideration of prosecution, that's how many were referred to them. Keep in mind, many of these cases were just the most serious investigated by detectives and do not include the number of cases that our patrol officers deal with on a daily basis. In many of these cases, during 2014, our office investigated a number of these cases which were very difficult and traumatic for the victims in these cases. We could not have done it without the cooperation of our partners, your office, the support of the District Attorney's Office, the support of the Children's Center, and many, many other community partners that were mentioned earlier. And we just want to stress how much we appreciate that support, and it is a team effort. We're all in this together, and the Commissioners have been great partners in assisting us with the development of the Family Justice Center, and we appreciate that continued support with all of our partners.
Thank you, Kevin. Chair Ludlow, Commissioner, my name's John Foote, I'm the DA here, and thank you for inviting us to speak to you briefly. This is the month when we try and raise awareness about child abuse and neglect, so it's an important month. And I'd like to just say a couple of things. As you know, our office prosecutes these cases, and I know from personal experience how tragic they are when we prosecute them. But actually uncovering them through an investigation and then intervening, whether it's a Children's Center or somewhere else, is really the beginning of changing what happened. So, in a way, even though it's tragic for the rest of us to learn about it, for the child, it's the beginning of change. And that's a powerful thing. Sometimes we have to understand about child abuse by looking at some example, and there are so many. But the one that's always haunted me is Penn State. Not because of the tragedy of it, but, which is terrible, but I was just frankly shocked at the lack of awareness in that community about child abuse and their failure to intervene. And I know it was all wrapped up in the legend of Joe Paterno and football, college football, which is powerful, but there was more than that. That state has very, very weak mandatory reporting laws. And what mandatory reporting laws do for me, and I'm a mandatory reporter, as are many people now and should be, is it raises awareness, it puts responsibility on people to do something when they hear something. And that's really what this month is all about. Getting us to intervene when we suspect something, because the earlier we do it, the better chance we have helping that child as soon as possible. Or finding out whether or not it's true. And the tragedy of Penn State, the thing that haunts me is how many people knew things and did nothing, and don't face any consequences for it. Mandatory reporting laws mean that somebody who fails to report can face the consequences if they don't, and it gets people's attention. So, this is a very important month in terms of getting people to pay attention. It's a shared responsibility, not just law enforcement, not just our office, but we all sharing it. And I think we've come a long way in Oregon, but it's never enough. So, thank you for the chance to speak to you publicly about it briefly, and thank you for your important support for this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Foote.
End of your presentation.
Almost. Not yet. And lastly, I'd like to introduce Barbara Pesquera from the Children's Center and Annalia Jackson from Family Stepping Stones Relief Nursery.
Good morning, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. I'm Annalia Jackson, and I'm the Executive Director of Family Stepping Stones Relief Nursery. And my program is the program that intervenes and tries to prevent child abuse and neglect. Our mission is to support and develop the children socially and emotionally and help them to form trust and relationships and attachment. And it's to work with the parents to strengthen them as parents and to preserve that family, hoping to stop unnecessary foster care placement and to intervene before any kind of child abuse or neglect can happen. And so, our program is a very powerfully happy program. And I'm here this morning mostly to thank the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners for your support, because we just turned five years old. And all of you were instrumental in the dream that we had five years ago before it was anything, when it was just a piece of paper that said we were a nonprofit. And we had to work to get the building and work to get the staff and work to learn about the laws and the program itself and really establish it in Clackamas County. And every step of the way, this county supported us and gave us grants, cheered us on, showed up at our fundraising events, gave us support that enabled us to grow, and now we are very strong and we are serving the whole county. And when I went to get a county map to hang in our hall so I could put pins in it and show you all where all the children were being served, the county map department told me that the state of New Hampshire fits in the middle of Clackamas County. It's so big. But we are serving the whole county, and we intend to grow and to get satellite classes in all the cities in the county. And I just wanted to thank you today for all of your support every step of the way.
Thank you.
Barbara?
Good morning. My name is Barbara Pesquera, Executive Director of Children's Center. Thank you, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners, for being leaders in Clackamas County for our children and families. You truly have had your hearts in, are invested in, the work that we do. As you know, at Children's Center, we do the medical assessments and provide forensic interviews and child support for families when abuse has been suspected. And last year, we received more than 750 referrals from families in Clackamas County and scheduled more than 500 assessments. We really value the partnership with the county. 182 of our cases involve the Sheriff's Office, so that's a big number just from unincorporated Clackamas County. Over half the children that we see are little girls, they're younger than seven, and most of them come to us for concerns of sex abuse. It's really sad, but the work we do, we know, is not enough. The Department of Human Services statistics show that, on average, 20 children a year die across the state as a result of abuse or neglect, and sadly, one out of 10 cases are reported. So, we have really been trying to be a resource for you, and we see this as a joint effort, and we really look forward to helping more and more kids. Sadly, we kind of look at these kids as the lucky ones who do get some help and somebody did report. I gave you some materials. The pinwheel is the Child Abuse Prevention Month symbol, and then we've developed a postcard that really tells people how to report. I want to echo what John said about mandatory reporting. This is in Spanish and in English, and I have more available if you would like them, and then information about Children's Center. But I wanted you to know that we've got several events this month coming up, because we really, really, our goal is to encourage people to report. And so, we are holding a training this Saturday at New Hope Community Church with Corey Jewel Jensen, who's nationally renowned speaker, who's worked with offenders. And based on the interviews that she's done with them, we'll help parents learn how to keep their children safe. The following Saturday, we're doing a Darkness to Light Training at Children's Center. That is a national curriculum, really, about how to keep, what parents can do to keep their children safe. And the public is encouraged to attend both of these, and registration is available on our website, so I hope to see you. We're very proud of a large-scale awareness campaign that we're doing this year at Clackamas Town Center. The hotline, Clackamas County Child Abuse Hotline Number is on display everywhere from the lampposts to the doors, all the way to the restroom mirrors where there are clings. And we'll be handing, we've got a kiosk, we'll be handing out a lot of pinwheels to everybody who comes to see the Easter Bunny. And we're really hoping that this encourages more people to report what they see. If I leave you with one thing, I would like for you to know that the Clackamas County Child Abuse Hotline Number is 971-673-7112. We encourage you to add it to your contacts, write it down right now, 971-673-7112. Nobody can help a child until we, who has been violated, until we have that report made. Finally, we're going to cap off the month with our luncheon on April 30th, and this year, we're thrilled to have former NBA player Kenny Anderson. He's got a powerful story. And then I want to leave you with a story about a kid that we saw this year. She was 14 years old. I'm going to pretend that her name was Sarah. She had been abused in her family for, since she was a preschooler, and was recruited into sex trafficking, was dropped off at the mall to do her work. She went into a store, and she told that one of the clerks, she said, "I'm tired, I can't do this anymore, please call." We saw her, and one of the things that she told our interviewers is that she just wanted to be placed in a foster family so she could go back to school. And those are the stories that we hope the awareness will prevent. Thank you again for your support.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, I thank you and your organizations for what you do. One of my focuses since I've got here was public safety, and since we've been, since I've been on the Commission, we support the Relief Nursery, Clackamas Women's Services, we recently opened a Family Justice Center called the Hope Center, and Children's Center. So, we have really focused in areas, you know, once somebody is abused or they become part of the system, and that system means juvenile justice system, jails, prisons, and the best way to prevent that is to go back to age zero, while they're yet to be born, focusing on how one becomes a family and how to support those children, and then make sure that, you know, they have, the children learn what is proper and what should occur, what a normal family is, I guess. And then, once that, you know, and the ones that slip by, providing the services necessary to keep them from continuing their life of crime or victim, being a victim the rest of their life. So, Clackamas County has committed and will continue to commit its resources towards that goal of ending the cycle of crime and abuse in Clackamas County. And I know that we serve lots of folks, even from outside the county, that come here. And obviously, you said six, six states out of 50 have programs that support, you know, focused on this area. And I think we should be proud as citizens of Oregon that we are indeed producing some results. So, thank you very much for your work and your continued support of what Clackamas County does. And certainly, the DA who has taken part in all these programs, as far as I know, has put a lot of his effort and career towards breaking the cycle.
John Foote is actually on both boards.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Real quickly, I think a lot of people know of my involvement with Coffee Creek Correctional Facility, where there's women prisoners. And having dealt with them and certainly their children, like Erin said, I well know that this problem is intergenerational. And John Foote's talked about it before, and certainly the sheriff at the summit, that, you know, values are caught, not taught. And so, that which they see, these children, and certainly experience, they think they should visit that upon their children and everybody they deal with. So, it is intergenerational, it's curable to a large degree, but like you said, one out of 10 are reported, and that's a problem. I'm glad you've given that number several times, because early intervention is going to change this. And certainly, the perpetrators should be well punished, and I agree with, and as many of you know, we are also, mandatory reporters. We, anytime we see it, we'll use that hotline, and certainly appreciate having that. Without the partnerships that we participate in, which have been mentioned today, we would not be successful at this. And we must support those services, and as you, many of you know, most of us go to, you know, most of your fundraisers and give what we can, certainly our participation where we can. But I emphasize to everybody out there, this is, this is all of our problems. This isn't the people that spend their good time, whether the volunteers and/or employees of each of your organizations, this is all of our problem. We must take ownership of this problem. When I grew up, it was in the 50s, ladies and gentlemen, and it was nothing to have the razor belt taken to you and have some purple wells because of that. And, you know, I probably deserved every one of them, let alone the willow stick as well. But, and I think, you know, overall, I still ended up okay, but that's not to say that all do, and much more abuse than just the razor belt is used on people, and certainly some of the people you've investigated, situations you've investigated. But I think that the abuse that we have seen, especially to the more youthful ones, is heinous. And John Foote gave me the tour, and you, Barbara, through your facility, and you look at those pictures of those young baby girls who were offed, killed, because of some sick, perverted twist in somebody. And I say again, the key is early intervention, recognition, and your participation out there to make sure it doesn't continue. I think each of us in our lives, especially as old as I am, have seen actually abuse occur in grocery stores, to such a extent, I mean, face slap and throw it on the ground. And, you know, as our society hopefully improves, reporting-wise, that's the kind of thing you'll call an intervention line for. But I appreciate you all being here and the job you've done. We're very supportive, and we're very concerned that we, we probably should get more reporting than 10%. That's the key message I hear today, is that we need to all be involved in that and spread the word. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Erin?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Krupp? Oh, it's time for a notice. Not Mr. Krupp, it's me. Now, it's time for citizens to talk at us, with us, or to us. And so, I've got some names, I'll call you up by twos and put you on deck in twos. Mary, did you mark that one, the ones with the star?
That's the public hearing.
All right, public hearing. All right, the first two are, in the order that I have them here, is Steve Bates and Les Poole, followed by Kevin Johnson and Barbara Kemper. Well, if you're not talking about pot today, you're not going to be on TV, I just wanted to warn you about it.
We have to wait to do that.
Either one of you, please.
Chair Ludlow, Commissioners, I'm Steve Bates from Boring, Oregon. Boring is a name, not a condition. I'm here, I was asked to talk about Saturday's events, Clackamas County Stand Up for Veterans and the Military. For those of you who are here today, we have these little wristbands, we'd like for you to take one home, and everybody show up Saturday at the Community College. There you go. Thank you very much. Yesterday, I attended the study session, and I was troubled by some of the comments made, especially by Commissioner Bernard, stating that there was a need for business licenses so the county can know where medical marijuana facilities are located. The state licenses the medical marijuana dispensaries, and the state has those locations available, and you can call them or get it online. You do not need to establish a new layer of government in Clackamas County to find them. Later on in the same session, Commissioner Bernard further insisted that the Clackamas County Commission should consider business permits or business licenses. Why? He said, "We need to know what we've got." Well, we have that data. There are home occupation permits issued by Clackamas County. There are business occupation permits issued by Clackamas County. There is data here in Clackamas County to tell you what kind of businesses we have. Establishing a new fee, a new license, and a new bureaucracy is not going to help anybody. Establishing a new fee, a new license, and a new bureaucracy is not going to help anybody. In addition, we have a large government already here in Clackamas County, and it's not running very efficiently. It takes a week for an electrical contractor to get a permit to install a burglar alarm. Why? In Multnomah County and in Washington County, you can get that same permit online the same day. It took six weeks for an acquaintance of mine in Canby to have a plans review done, and that plans review took six weeks, and that business was not able to open for six weeks because it took too long. We need better service, and we need better government. We don't need more government, we need better government. Thank you very much.
I think I've changed where I announce where I come from. I no longer say I'm Les Poole from Gladstone, I say I'm Les Poole from Clackamas County. And if you introduce yourself that way, you'd be surprised how many people will raise their eyebrows, because the eyes are on Clackamas County. We're at the crossroads, obviously, we're right where the rubber meets the road, we're right where Metro and Trimest's plans are crashing into reality, and, and a fiscal response, or fiscal questions about what's being imposed on the region. There's folks in this room that have spoke about the plans for development at Cavalier Way over by Alder Creek School. We are told over and over that Metro doesn't impose density, but anyone that wants to look knows that Metro is mandating density. Metro is a big reason why we've had the disaster in Damascus, and Metro's a layer of government that needs to be reined in. Not eliminated, but reined in. And I've been at Metro meetings telling them this, I realize this is not a Metro meeting, but my words are, are pretty pertinent. We're, we're seeing land use decisions and complications to development and to growth that are not good. This gentleman just referred to some of them. I'd love to hear more about what Metro's going to do to, to, to create some equity out here with Clackamas County, after the recent court decision and fiasco where all the urban reserves were overturned. If the county was making their own decisions, instead of having Metro run the urban growth boundary, and operate in a little dark vacuum at 2:00 every Thursday, and I mean a really dark vacuum with nobody there, it reminds me of the days when Sheriff Lehan was here, and Richard Langdon and I were here, asking questions, and everybody thought we were nuts. Commissioner Bernard threw him out one time illegally, we had all kinds of fun, but the message was, it's time to change things. And we've got a long ways to go, but certainly, in spite of all the issue, issues, things are better now than they were a year and a half or two years ago. There isn't time to comment about the Gladstone Library, other than to say I'm on the Citizens' Committee. I think over time, we've discovered that there's a process that needed to happen that never really did there. My message to you is that I think most of us understand that it's not really the county's problem, how that gets addressed. And I don't think it's, it, that the message from most of the people that are speaking about that issue is a plea to have the county act, as much as have the county be aware that that whole project, and that whole mess, whatever you want to call it, is tumbling in a direction, and the county may have to respond in the future. It, it really is Gladstone's issue, and I know the county is not the know-all, and not is really here to control it. And I would appreciate some comments about that. Thank you.
Wrap it up, thank you. All right, thank you, thank you, gentlemen. And so it is Kevin Johnson, is that right? Kevin Johnson, Barbara Kemper, Commissioner Savas says Schrader here, so bear with me.
Well, that's right. I don't have my red light, it's a blue light over here.
Yeah, exactly.
Just wanted to speak, one of the speakers here just spoke about the business license thing, and I agree a lot with what he said with regards to no, no increased layer of government, or an increase in staff, or increases in, in cost, but simply better service. And that was actually part of our retreat, was really around that dialogue of providing better service. But as a, and I, and I really think that we can impose, hopefully, a business license without a fee, and without any, adding any staff. And I think that the benefit, and that's really what it's all about, the benefit, would actually, I think, reach across a number of different constituencies. That being, as a former business owner, at a location on McGlothlin Boulevard, I had a, units inside there where people could, could start a business without no license, without anything. And a lot of those were non, not legitimate businesses. They were places to cook meth, they were places to, to steal from people, they were places where stolen property was brought and sold. There was a lot of illegal activity. I'm not saying that that's rampant, but had there really been an op, a situation where those people could be checked out and make sure they actually had a business license that was legitimate, or that they were polluting and dumping garbage, and all kinds of hazardous materials and so forth, that's the kind of thing, I think, that we have a responsibility. And, and I believe we can do that without a fee, I can believe without adding staff, and, and help better, other businesses that are impacted by those negative, and the citizenry as well. So if we, if we can't do that, then that's, you know, but I think it's something to look at and consider. We can't do that without, without, without a, if we can do that without raising the fees, then great. I just wanted to speak to that a little bit, in defense of that concept.
Commissioner Bernard?
And actually, at our retreat the other day, we talked about customer service. Those businesses are our customers, and the people who live next door to are, are our customers. During the commercial discussion about, actually, it's industrial, we were looking at zoning issues, and there was one gentleman who had started a business and had expanded, and was doing things that were actually not permitted in that area. Now, if a person knew that before they started the business, they may not do that there, they may have looked somewhere else where that would have been appropriate. So I think it's important that, that we know that. The other is chemicals. Now, I realize you have to file with the, the state on Fire Marshal, a report, I do every year, but we don't get that report, we don't know what they are, what those businesses are. And I not necessarily want to add a fee, but if, I think we should recover our costs as much as possible. And our staff is looking at opportunities to do that on the web. It might be just a link that you could collect, connect to, which could also connect to CMAP, which is, tells you about zonings, might also tell you about slides and other things. So I think it's important that we think of that as a service to the citizens and to the business. The thing about marijuana locations, yes, they get a permit from the, the state, but they don't actually, the state doesn't locate or set the time, well, they may set the time, but they don't locate where that business goes. I have a business license too, but the state does, knows very little about what I do, except that, that my business does a certain, you know, it's a certain type of business. They don't ask me about a lot of the other issues, they certainly don't ask me about the time of business hours, and whether I'm near a school or whatever. So it just makes sense that we have that information available. The other thing is sometimes we get opportunities for business grants, maybe a facade grant or something like that. If we don't know you're there, we may not know that you may have that opportunity. So we need to have some information so that we can provide you with, example, looking at commercial zones. How are we going to know who to notify, except by address, whether we're going to change that commercial zone, and you may not be, belong there, without having the ability to notify you that we're looking at that? So it's really about connecting and providing great customer, customer service. It's not about creating another layer of government. And we have a department, our Business and Community Services, that would be a good place to consider looking at, at that. And we're spending a lot of time figuring out where our investments should go, and, and that group, that organization within the county, could provide that service. So that's, we're just looking at it.
Thank you. Either one of you can begin.
Good morning, Kevin Johnson, Gladstone. I have a few comments about the Henninger versus Clackamas County arbitration. First, an employee of the county council's office testified that the county council's office is to review vendor contracts to assure compliance with applicable contracting rules and laws, and was concerned as to whether the proper procurement procedures were going to be followed. In fact, he was told by the director of West that the county council's office would have no role in West's sole source contracting. But he admitted that he did not convey his concerns to his, his superiors at the county's office, or report his concerns to anyone at that time. The same member of the county council's office was copied on an email about amendments to a West contract that could not be justified. Half of the $300,000 amendment was for work already performed and compensated for, artificially splitting the contract. Again, he apparently said nothing. One month later, this board approved that amendment. $150,000 wasted. I'm just wondering if that employee has the best interests of the county at heart. Maybe if he had said something, this whole sorry episode could have been avoided, and not cost the taxpayers to this point, possibly $844,000 with the arbitration loss, and $150,000 in an unjustified contract amendment. I'm also wondering if this is the type of legal work you normally receive from the county's office. It certainly doesn't sound very professional. Second, in November and December of 2011, a certified fraud examiner from Moss Adams was auditing West. She testified that contract splitting to avoid a contract value of $150,000 circumvents the need for scrutiny and approval by the BCC of contracts greater than $150,000. She met with county employees about these contracts that had been entered into by West. She also was told of abuses of sole source contracting. Her report was issued December 14th, 2011, and addressed only sole source contracting, but no mention of artificially splitting contracts. The same employee from the county council's office spoke with the auditor concerning these findings. You would think a fraud examiner would look into anything suspicious, so why did the audit not address both issues? Maybe somebody told her not to. Maybe someone should ask her. Who, if anyone, reviewed the audit, or was it just filed away, having served his, served his purpose of complying with the law? All of this occurred 11 to 15 months before the incident that led to the arbitration. Had any of this come out at the time it was happening, I believe the county tax, taxpayers would have saved almost a million dollars. My brother was here last week to ask why the person that caused this mess was still being paid. I'm asking why we're paying an employee at the county council's office and an auditing firm that don't seem to care what goes on up here at Red, Red Soils. You say that you only have the power to hire two people. According to what has been stated in this arbitration, what has happened in the council's office, a rational person would think you should be hiring one of those two right now.
Real quickly, ladies and gentlemen, we have had executive sessions about this matter. And the commission's direction, as suggested by Mr. Krupp, is to fully investigate, and he has, has an investigator looking in there. And, and let's all remember this, a ruling was put down by an arbitrator. The arbitrator is an attorney. I know you don't believe this, but sometimes attorneys are wrong. And in fact, if every attorney, or one single attorney was always right, we'd never need the second one. So the arbitrator ruled, and some of the things are being disputed by Clackamas County. And so that, that analysis through the investigation and an audit will be concluded, and then that information given to the board for their proper action. In relation to a non-reporting situation, it is incumbent upon our county employees, when they feel something is fraudulent or illegal, that they report that. I agree. The person that you'd mentioned has been advised that it would be best in the future to report these things as they see them. But that's where it's at. It's been corrected. But the problem is, it's not just the reporting, it's the fact that it happened, and what happened. And that is the question, what did happen? And that's again, what Mr. Krupp is investigating, and this board will take the appropriate action. Commissioner Savas?
Just want to just build on that a little bit. There are, we have found and discovered, you know, here and there, in different departments, different times, discrepancies. And I, which I feel should have been either caught by an auditor, or should have been focused on, in a practice that would have prevented that loss in the first place. So without speaking to the issue at hand, what I will say is that my, my initiative this year, and the budget cycle and their future, is to install an independent internal auditor in the treasurer's office, and hopefully I'll have enough support from the board to do that. And I think I can make the argument very easily, that will actually save money by doing that, because currently, we hire outside people to do that, we hire outside auditors, outside investigators at times, and to not do our typical budgeting auditing, but actually operational audits, for specific focused audits. So with that, I, I hopefully will be able to eliminate that, and if someone feels there's an impropriety taking place, whether that's internal, external, they can go to that auditor in that independent office, and, and have that looked at, and they can decipher or determine whether or not it's worth looking into, or if there's any validity to it. So hopefully that will prevent some of the things that have occurred.
Thank you. Barbara?
Good morning, commissioners. I spoke to you last week in regard to-
Go ahead, tell us your name, we know you've been-
Okay. I spoke to you last week in regard to a land use approval of a design review application, which upon close examination appeared to be, in reality, an application for a treatment, for a facility to treat sewage. We've been looking into this pretty closely since then, and I, I did send an email to BCC-
We've got it.
You, you, you do individually get those, that's what I was not sure about. Okay. So anyhow, the Clackamas CPO, as you will know, has filed an appeal of this, and I've been out talking to people about this, and gathering support for the hearing, which we expect will result from this. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I guess we always have tried to get answers for people, specific and/or information, if they're not even answers, they're information. And so I asked Mr. Johnson, Dan Johnson, to come forward, you know, because I don't understand, remember, we are separate, ladies and gentlemen, we are the board, and we do not hear these things. This is a hearings officer, another attorney, who may or may not always be right, but they hear these things, and then they are, give their approval or not, if they give an approval, it is appealable. You're absolutely right. Actually, this is a staff decision, I believe, Mr. Johnson, you know, what I think we're looking for is, we know that this particular location, which Barbara has pointed out, is fairly close to the Clackamas River. It is not, from what I understand, though, a sewage treatment facility, it is a transfer station, or something like that, is that correct?
That is correct. Just for the record, Dan Johnson, Department of Transportation Development, I want to make sure we're on the record, and we're very clear, this is a land use action, as the chair described. It's a design review, I am not the planning director, just to make sure we're clear on that. He was indisposed at the time, but I am here to answer questions about the particular application. The property in question is adjoining our particular site, it's across the street on Caps Road. An appeal has been applied for, and it has been processed. Looks like the appeal date, we're looking at, May 15th is the date. The facility described in this particular application is speedy septic, it is a septic facility that basically was going to, for porta potty processing, they basically bring those materials, they're going to build a office building, they're going to build associated facilities with that, basically bring those materials on site and dispose of them, not per the treatment, into the treatment system, but fundamentally de-water those elements, it's similar to a de-watering facility that we have, for example, for Water Environment Services, where we de-water not septic elements, but, but stormwater facilities, when we clean ditches, things of that nature. But they de-water those materials, and then dispose of- But they dewater those materials and then dispose of them per the DEQ requirements. There is some discussion in here, as I review it, about the possibility of conveying those materials into the septic system, pardon me, into the sanitary sewer system that's available through Clackamas Service District Number One. But I'm not sure that's been fully vetted and approved by the district at this point in time.
So a real quick question in that regard. Okay, so we know this is a facility that doesn't treat, like you say, dewater, I understand. And any permitted, permit will be applied for and allowed, probably to put it, or some form of affluent, effluent, back into the sewer system, and they'll pay accordingly for that.
Correct.
But is, at any time in a facility like this, are we looking at major spillages of you-know-what onto the ground that may leach into the Clackamas River?
There is no such spillages outlined or posed in this particular project.
How about possible?
Anything is possible.
But is this concrete or asphalt surfaces they're working on with a proper drainage system, or?
We require in the urban area for any of those facilities that are located within transfer areas, parking lots, anything of that nature, to be asphalted. And they would not allow for infiltration through those areas.
So they're going to clean porta potties on the site?
Uh...
Usually, they clean them out in the field.
I would assume that most of the cleaning would occur out in the field. I really can't answer that question with a lot of specificity. I don't want to-
All right. Barbara, we're trying to get you answers, but certainly, you've filed the appeal, and it will be justly heard by the hearings officer.
By the hearings officer. Yeah. There are two components to the appeal, just to make sure the board is aware, one of which is the use itself, the second is the impact to the Clackamas River.
The use of what was that, Dan?
The use itself, is it just an allowed use within the district.
All right. So thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
All right. So we are now to Cindy Lewis Wolfram, and, I'm sorry, is that Mandy Woods?
Mac.
All right. Marty Woods?
It's Mac.
Is it what?
Mac.
Oh, my gosh, Mac. What happened to your first name? Where are you? Come on up here. Mac, I'm going to talk to you about that military train handwriting that you got here. The Navy didn't teach you to scroll very well, I'm afraid, after 20-plus years.
Waves were too high.
Yeah. Sit down and talk with us, Mac. Go ahead.
Ladies first, while I come down. That's okay, go ahead.
She likes to back clean up.
Go for it.
Okay. I think that Cindy Lewis Wolfram, unincorporated Clackamas County. I'm here today, Chair, to speak additionally to the subject that was just brought to you by Ms. Kemper. One of the things that we found in this Clackamas CPO's appeal request, and I'm glad to hear our date, was that this facility is going to have, I believe the excess was of 180,000 gallons a day, something like that, going through the system. They have large storage facilities planned for this system. It's in the process, in the information that was given to us, which I know passed through the planning session. Now, if that is the case, if there's large storage facilities available on site, it seems to me that you need to make sure that there are systems set up so that you can either prevent or take care of any potential spilling. That's why we're into the appeal system, and we will take further care as we are processing through the appeal to make sure that message gets through. I have some more of the land use paperwork, if anyone has not got it yet, here with me today. That's where that information is kept. I am also here speaking today about veterans and the stand-up for veterans process that's going on this weekend. I'm glad to see that you all are aware of it. Hopefully, that you'll find some time to be up there and hear from some of our veterans and their families about the needs that are necessary, and that we are able to take care of them through our veteran service offices. I do appreciate that the effort that's gone in to make sure that our veterans are dealt with in a fair and progressive way. As a veteran myself, I know that there are times that have been past that veterans were not fully accommodated. In fact, I don't know if Mac was in that effort or not. I know that I was serving during the time of the Vietnam War, and it is one of those areas that we still need to go back and take care of our veterans who were not properly acknowledged in that timeframe. And that's basically all I came to talk to you about today. So thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, thank you for mentioning, thank you for mentioning the stand-up. At least two commissioners will be speaking at the event, myself at 10 o'clock, and I believe Commissioner Schrader, if I remember right. So it's an important issue to us. Both Martha and I serve on the Veterans Counsel or Committee, and try to help plan and get this event going. The needs of the veterans are very, are very deep, innumerable. As in evidence of the Fort Hood shooting this week, a person claims to have PTSD or possibly a undiagnosed brain injury from his service. Whether that's true or not, we'll find out about that. But obviously, he's a troubled individual. The Defense Department claims 20% of our veterans come home from war with PTSD. I would submit that it's probably double that. That's what they're willing to admit. I've had quite a bit of experience in this issue, being on the Brain Injury Association for seven years, and as president for two years. We passed legislation in Oregon to address some of these concussive issues. It's a big, big deal. I don't believe our federal government's doing enough. In fact, I think they've ignored it in their recent cutbacks to the budget on veterans' pay, and even the care of veterans coming home. So Cindy, you're right, it's a huge issue. It needs to be addressed. What we're doing at Clackamas County is a small part, but we're trying very hard. We have put money aside for our CBOs to assist people in getting their benefits, but there's always more to be done, and you're right.
Well, I thank you for that, Commissioner, but the, I believe the stand-up is also focused this year on veterans and their families.
That's right.
Their families. And I'd like to remind the commissioners that, you know, like the basketball teams around here, veterans have a six-man, too. This is, their families stand up for them all the time, and their families are there, and veterans worry about the home front. And if they know that their people are being taken care of, their service is much stronger and much better. And we have the best-serving military in the world. So thank you.
Thank you.
Clackamas County Commissioners and Staff, and Chair Ludlow. I have known Mr. Ludlow for a long time. And I know he's been a Realtor for a long time, and I want to talk to the public about what we should know that Mr. Ludlow, I know, knows. Some of the others don't know what they don't know. And there's things going on with some attorneys that don't know up from down, and that's why I'm pleased to tell you that one that I filed a complaint on sometime back just went to prison for five years. And they threw an extra six months on top of him. Read the Oregonian, March 19th issue. It's interesting. Enough on that. What I want to talk to the public about is our properties. We can, anyone can go right over here to the nice building next door, the County Tax Records Department, and you can find out anything you want to know about a property. Just need the address. You can find out who the owner is. You can find out if he owns it as a sole proprietor, as an LLC, as a corporation, or a partnership. There's no secrets with public information. It's free. Well, you may have to pay a small token if you want a copy of it, but it'll give you the, all the information on it. When, whether it's mine or my neighbor's, when I bought it, how much I paid for it, how the name is filed. You can go down to Salem, the Secretary of State's office, and find out more than you need to know about the truth. The public records aren't accurate. That's why title banks insure them for accuracy. If it's not, if it's wrong, that title insurance pays for it. The public needs to know this information to find out the truth. Just because somebody says one thing about their property, you need to know the truth, and you can get it for free. You can also file a complaint for 30, well, whatever a stamp costs on an attorney. You can call the bar. They'll send you out a complaint form. It's simple to fill out. I've filled it out, well, I won't go into details on me, but it works. It gets results. I love it. And I'm happy to say, I'm one of them veterans, only a little over 20 years, three tours to Vietnam. Thank you for your service, too, ma'am. I was lucky. I came back, and I'm tough. Some people don't like it that I'm tough. I win. I don't back up, and I have a lot of respect, and have respect for other veterans and people of their job. But I don't back up to somebody that feeds me a line that's not accurate. So I can tell you, if you want to feed me a line, you need to be prepared to deal with it. And you can go to Secretary, down Salem, Secretary Kate Brown's office, and get the truth on how anybody owns a property, don't matter if they're trying to hide it. Thank you. I'm so proud to be here. Have a good day.
Commissioner-
Mr. Ludlow, you may, I don't know how long you've been, he's a principal broker, like myself. We're over these other brokers. However, even a beginner broker learns how to deal with property to know who owns it. You have to do that to be a good Realtor. Right, John?
Agreed. 37 years, by the way. Commissioner Bernard?
And actually, you can go to http://cmap.clackamas.us/map, and get that information online. Put in an address, and it'll tell you who owns it, what they paid for it, what the zoning is, what the altitude is, and what services are available near that property. It's really a valuable tool that Clackamas County has. It's called CMAP.
And a great deal of the information is, yeah, it's available on the Sessions Department, where you can put in an address and plug it in. Also, for those Clackamas County residents that live more north, you can go to portlandmaps.com. The interesting thing about Portland Maps is they have a bunch of tabs, which are just overlays, that give you more and more information about properties. So if you're curious about a property, including who your neighbor is, and what they paid for their house, like Mac was saying, I'd recommend either of those sites.
Interesting to hear that. I'd just done some research, and it comes up with an address at 5200 Southwest McCattam Avenue, Suite Number 265.
What does?
It's on Block 37 in Milwaukee.
Oh, okay.
You can find out who owns every square foot, even if it's an unrecorded contract that somebody has control of.
Well, we must understand that the mailing address does not denote ownership.
That's true.
It just says where the tax statement is sent. And sometimes, that's to an accountant, an attorney, you know, whomever, so.
You and I know that, but a lot of the public don't know that, Mr. Ludlow.
We're trying to educate people. Thank you, Mac. Thank you both. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, it is now time for a public hearing. Mr. Krupp?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have a public hearing to consider declaring a moratorium on medical marijuana facilities in Clackamas County. And I'm going to invite Mr. Matcor to address this issue.
I might note that the, we got off easy, I guess the television cameras left, although we're still on TV of sorts. We will not be featured on tonight's news, I'm sorry to say.
Mr. Matcor?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Good morning, Stephen Matcor, your county counsel, and I am here to present for the board's consideration this morning. And addition to the county code, it would be an addition to Title Six, and it is proposing for the first reading, a one-year moratorium on medical marijuana facilities within unincorporated portions of Clackamas County itself. What it does is, it basically implements state law. The legislature has authorized cities and counties in this last special session to impose a one-year moratorium on these facilities to allow local jurisdictions additional time in which to come up with time, place, manner restrictions, by way of a zoning code or any other local regulatory tool, to more closely monitor the implementation or proliferation of medical marijuana facilities within their jurisdiction itself. This would be an ordinance change. It would be good for one year till May 1st of 2015. That is the extent that the legislature has allowed, unless shortened by this board, or unless shortened by the legislature and/or courts in the interim, or extended perhaps as well. So it would be, the first reading, 13 days from now, I think we have scheduled for the 17th, would be the second reading, where this board decides to proceed with it. The enforcement mechanism, as proposed, is going to be the sheriff. This proposal has the support both of the sheriff and the district attorney, Mr. Foote, who is here today as well. And I'm here to answer any questions that the board might have. I will say, I'm sorry, this ordinance isn't necessarily novel. It's based on a model ordinance presented to the counties and cities by the Oregon League of Cities and the League of Counties throughout the state. And my understanding is that Oregon City contemplated theirs last night. I'm not sure what the status was of that proposal. Wilsonville's doing it. A number of other jurisdictions around the state are doing it as well, basically availing themselves of the one-year respite that the legislature has empowered local counties and cities to enjoy.
Commissioner Smith?
I want to reiterate some things, and this is response to some emails folks sent us. Well, you need to delay your action on this so we can have more citizen input. You need to hear from your citizens, and frankly, I agree with them. However, the legislature, I want to make this very clear, the legislature passed a law that said this must be done by May 1st, or else. It's this board's druthers to take time and listen to the people. That's why we have a public hearing today, and that's why we have another public hearing. We are doing what is demanded from us by law, from the state legislature. Our hands are tied in this matter. And I know this is very controversial. I know that there's this, and there's this, and then there's this. If we were to allow dispensaries in Clackamas County, I believe that a majority of our citizens would be in uproar over it. Now, this is not to say that medical marijuana facilities are still allowed to happen in certain places, or the access to medical marijuana is still thriving, I'm sure. And I'm sure we will hear from people today in testimony saying they have a medical need for marijuana, and I understand that. And you can go to a doctor and get a prescription. We are not addressing that issue today of medical marijuana. We're addressing the issue of recreational marijuana, and I want to be very clear on that. So as we continue down this road, I look forward to a lively discussion on what we're going to be talking about today. But remember, we have been directed by the state legislature to take this action.
Commissioner Bernard?
Actually, I think what we're doing today actually gives us time to consider what we'll do in the future. It gives us a year, and I hope that we will address this issue by a committee, which would include perhaps a commissioner, general citizens, and people who use or have prescriptions for medical marijuana, and the DA, and law enforcement, folks like that who deal with illegal marijuana or prescription marijuana on a daily basis, I would imagine. So I think this gives us the time. We don't want to be in the same position that other states have been in when a law passed, and they weren't ready to deal with it. And I think that recently, the governor of Colorado said that he wished he had had time to work through this issue before it was legalized. Frankly, they probably knew it was going to be legalized at some point. They probably should have taken the initiative to do it then, and that's what we're doing, is we're taking the initiative to look at it now, work with our law enforcement, our legal system, to figure out how to move forward in a safe way, and still have some say on where and what time these facilities may be located. So I think it gives us that time to consider those.
Commissioner Sabas?
So just for clarification, ask legal counsel to confirm, provided I'm correct, that this, any existing medical marijuana facilities, or patients, or those who receive a prescription, will not be impacted by this. They will continue to operate. Is that correct?
That's a very broad question. This ordinance prohibits medical marijuana facilities within unincorporated portions of Clackamas County.
But am I understanding this-
In terms of other prescriptions, it doesn't speak to that. It is a locational use moratorium.
But my understanding is, existing facilities are not impacted?
There is not a grandfather provision within this ordinance.
There are existing facilities within Wounded Knee. There are existing facilities within Multnomah County. Uh, we have no jurisdiction over that.
Multnomah County?
Yeah.
That's correct. This is only, would be applicable to those that are lawfully established within unincorporated portions of Clackamas County. Offhand, Commissioner, I don't know what established facilities we have within unincorporated Clackamas County currently for medical marijuana dispensaries. I really don't. I'm not entirely sure if planning does either. But it would, it, the way it's worded, it would affect all medical marijuana dispensaries within the county.
Now, I understand what was said earlier was that we are, we're talking about recreational use marijuana today. We are not. We are, we are.
No, we're not.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, we are not talking about recreational use. However, there is a ballot measure, as most of you know, that if passed, does address recreational use. We are talking about dispensaries for medical marijuana in unincorporated Clackamas County today, and we'll accept testimony regarding that. So again, the recreational use is a separate concern. It's going to be addressed by the voters, which many of us believe this should have done too. But it exists, it's now law, and we are going to implement the one-year moratorium and take a good, hard look at how this goes together. One of the things I said in the study session the other day is, for example, this is why it take a year to go by. Whether it's recreational or medical, I don't think there should be drive-through pot service or medical, you know, whether it's salve or whatever, you know, the ingestion is, capsules. Just something that bugs me about driving up on the way to Mount Hood and dropping by the, the pot drive-through and picking up some for the, the skiing trip. Now, understand, this is medical marijuana, and I understand that we're talking about today. But ultimately, if this ballot measure passes, then we're going to have to deal with a lot more consideration on marijuana. Commissioner Smith?
A point of clarification in my earlier statement. I do believe that this will lead to recreational marijuana. And that's my focus in this hearing today and the moratorium that we're going to allow. My opinion of marijuana is that we do not need an intoxicated society to be prosperous. And I'm going to hear from some folks back there that, you know, you're taking our rights away. I do believe this is going to lead to widespread use of facilities selling recreational marijuana. Although our focus today is, you know, whether we're going to have dispensaries or not, it leads to a much larger issue. There will be a very powerful initiative come to vote for November. The issues are the same. Do we want widespread marijuana use eventually in Clackamas County? And that's what we're going to hear from today.
All right. Uh, further comments by commissioners at this time, most might have some as we get into the public hearing. So, uh, there being now, open the public hearing on this matter, and I have some cards up here, and I'll be calling you up.
John.
Huh? Oh, yes, the card, the first card is our elected official, uh, Clackamas County District Attorney, Mr. John Foote.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Chair Ludlow, my name is John Foote, and, and thank you for inviting me up to speak for a few minutes. Um, I hate this subject because, um, so much misinformation out there. First of all, the voters did vote on dispensaries and rejected them. Okay? And then the legislature passed it. It just drives me crazy. The voters spoke on this. That's the first thing. That's a fact. Um, next thing, this is not about demonizing people. This is not about that. But this is also not about minimizing the health risks and effects on our society. Marijuana is an intoxicant, and having it illegal suppresses use. Every study says that. And when it gets legalized, use will go up, and the ramifications will be widespread. That is, in my opinion, a fact. Now, medical marijuana, as it was, and I've talked to people who were involved in California and Oregon and the idea of medical marijuana. The vision of it was people who were really sick, really sick, and it was ameliorative. The estimates in Oregon were about five hundred to fifteen hundred patients. We have fifty thousand registered patients in this state. It's not about medical marijuana, it's about legalization through the back door. That's a fact, in my opinion. Okay? Now, excuse me.
Hey, ma'am, uh, please hold.
You'll get your turn to talk.
Please hold. You'll get your opportunity, should you turn in an agreed card. Thank you.
Now, I'm not talking about any individual. That's a medical decision. But medical marijuana, marijuana has turned into backdoor legalization. It was a very clever campaign because it turned users into patients, and it changed the whole aura of marijuana. Now, we have gotten rid of prison sentences in Oregon for marijuana. We did that last session at the urging of the DAs. And possession of less than an ounce of marijuana hasn't been a crime in this state for more than thirty years. We had an effective way to suppress use and not demonize users. But that wasn't enough for people who want to use marijuana. So, now, if, if voters decide to legalize marijuana, that will be the law. I think it's a mistake. It's not the end of the world, but I don't think it's good for our society because it will be more people intoxicated, and it will affect the quality of life in communities. And I don't think we ought to have medical marijuana dispensaries in this state, and I don't think we ought to have them in Clackamas County. Now, quite frankly, they're not going to ban it in Multnomah County, my guess, so people can travel the ten miles to go up there or five miles to go up there. So, um, uh, that really, that really covers my comments. This is not about demonizing people. This is about separating fact from lots of information that's not accurate. I would encourage you to ban marijuana dispensaries, um, and, uh, I'm hoping that a marijuana legalization measure does not pass, but ultimately, the voters will decide that. People are not surprised, people in my profession aren't crazy about marijuana, but it's not really about demonizing people. I had some kids from Westland High School come see me a couple of years ago, and they were very dismissive. Well, we should just legalize it. And I said, well, do you know people who use marijuana? Yeah? I said, well, don't tell me, because I got nervous. Don't tell, I'm not interested in their names. Uh, what are they like when they're stoned? Are they very much used to anybody? Are they very productive? Now, I'm not saying that makes people evil, but do we want more of that? Um, and regulating marijuana will be very difficult because you can grow it in your backyard. It's not like alcohol. This is a mess. The, the governor of Arizona, of Colorado actually has said he regrets the legalization of marijuana. He didn't just say he wished he thought about it more, he thinks it's a mistake. So, you know, the voters will decide, but I don't think we ought to get ahead of the voters, and in fact, the voters voted against dispensaries, so.
John, real quickly, you know, and, and your comment was, and, and that's what we're doing, but we're not going to allow any open, but that's only for one year. Now, we don't know what the legislature's going to do next time they meet. They might elongate that period, but currently, we can only ban for one year, agreed? May, May first to May first?
Yes, and, um, you know, it's, this is the same legislature that allowed medical marijuana dispensaries after the voters turned it down, so I, I, you know, I can't say what that was about, but, um, and ultimately, you know, folks in my business, we, we enforce the law. We don't write the laws. So, uh, we just encourage people to think about this before they just act as if there's no problem with this, or that we're in some sort of draconian environment if we don't do it, which we're not. So, um...
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. DA, John Foote.
Thank you very much.
All right, now, we get to these cards I have. I'll call you up in twos with two on deck. Abigail Wells and Tracy Hoffman, followed by William Eubenson and Mike Mullins. All right, ladies, either one can go first.
Thank you, Chair Ludlow and County Commissioners. My name is Tracy Hoffman, and I am the Director of a Vibrant Future Coalition that serves to prevent substance abuse among youth. And so I come today concerned about the youth and what this may do to them. So my goal, to be clear, is not to take away medicine from people who are in pain or who are ill, but rather to inform you of the impacts of legalization marijuana dispensaries and what that might actually look like for our youth here in Clackamas County. So more storefronts will inevitably mean more normalization and, which also then means more usage. In New Zealand, there was a study that showed that youth that had cannabis dependence showed an average IQ drop of eight points, and this was a thirty-eight-year study done by Dundan. It started in nineteen seventy-two. Um, just, uh, in two thousand twelve, our Clackamas County eleventh grade past thirty-day use was twenty-two percent. So in Denver, Colorado, they recently did their thirty-day use student wellness survey, and that was twenty-eight percent. So we are getting really close to what it is like in Colorado by the normalizing of marijuana. So also, one other statistic is that Colorado's Department of Education reports that forty percent increase in suspensions and expulsions due to marijuana since medical marijuana became legal in two thousand eight. Already, as it is, our youth are struggling to graduate here in Oregon, and it's only going to be harder with the normalizing of marijuana in our state. Uh, I actually, um, have been in contact with one of the school administrators here within, uh, Clackamas County, and they, um, are coming across this situation more often now where they, um, call in a student for possession of marijuana, and then they call home to the parents, and the parents come down and argue with the administrators for their medical marijuana back because the student stole their parents' marijuana. So that is a, a, an reoccurring situation that's happening now with medical marijuana in our community. Um, and I'm not to, I'm not saying that I don't want to take away somebody who is terminally ill and needs that. I, that's not my position by any means to take that away from them, but it, it is impacting our youth, and I want that to be addressed, um, when looking at the different things that you guys consider moving forward after the moratorium. So I just want to thank you guys for supporting this because this is important, um, to look at what the future of our youth look like. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hello, Chair Ludlow and County Commissioners. My name's Abigail Wells, and I am the Vibrant Future Coalition Coordinator. Um, Vibrant Future Coalition is aware of the huge responsibility that the county jurisdictions have to consider, um, the full range of the potential impacts, um, for the youth, in particular in our community. Um, we would like to thank you for considering the moratorium, um, on the marijuana dispensaries, as well as really being proactive, um, on the facilities and putting into place before the moratorium expires, um, things specific such as hours of operation. I'm considering signage and advertising for the more, or more terms, for the, um, facilities. Um, putting things, um, such as media, the media messages and the advertising they have on the storefronts and what that looks like, putting some restrictions on that. The time, place, manner is what we're really interested in, and, um, would like you guys to consider different things such as, um, limiting proximity to family-related sites such as preschools, daycare centers, game arcades, playgrounds, churches, parks, libraries, things that are not currently protected under the, the law. Um, we'd like public notice in comment periods for neighboring businesses and residents, um, an enforcement plan to address diversion and impaired driving, training, education, policies, compliance checks if the sheriff is going to be, um, in charge of that sort of thing, having minor decoy operations. Um, really, uh, the norms show that higher visibility and normalizing of medical marijuana facilities, including signage on the facilities, has an effect that's kind of confusing for young people. Um, we are more concerned about the distinction between adult and youth use and the recreational versus medicinal use. Prevention science draws, there's a definitive link between a low perception of harm of a substance and an increase in this use. And we do presentations within local high schools, and this is very obvious when we see that, um, students who, um, as the medical marijuana has become legalized, uh, the increase from the student wellness survey has gone up. So, for example, in Clackamas County, sixth graders' perception of harm dropped ten percent in the two short years between two thousand ten and two thousand twelve. Um, we, as prevention professionals, would, um, consider you to, to send a clear message that protects the youth from the normalization of marijuana, regardless of the position a proponent or opponent of, of, uh, medical marijuana, just to consider the youth, um, when creating some of these safeguards. Thank you.
Abigail, and, uh, thank you both for coming today, Tracy and Abigail. Um, you know, it is the key, you said, is time, place, and manner. And so I would suggest to you, since you've already formulated some ideas about the regulations of this kind of, these kind of places, that you would forward that to the county and ask that legal counsel get a hold of it. There's going to be a lot of study, there's going to be a lot more public input as we formulate any rules as to the time, place, and manner, and we appreciate input from everybody, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. And, uh, next is, as I said, William, you're going to have to correct me on that, Eubenson? Thank you. Eubenson and Mike Mullins.
Well, thank you, Chair and Counsel. I'd like to start off by saving, saying that my father volunteered two tours in Vietnam so I could be here to do this.
What's your name, sir?
So, my name is William Esbenson.
All right.
And, uh, I'm a patient of the Oregon Medical Marijuana Program, and I know a little bit about it. Uh, House Bill Thirty-four Sixty was created to help these patients access medical marijuana, not recreation, medical. And to deny access to a cancer patient that has to travel ten miles, they have one limb, they're a disabled vet with PTSD, and, which has been approved by Oregon to be used this year for medical marijuana. Um, we, we'd be helping a lot of people by letting them access. By accessing and having a controlled access point, you take these people from going to drug dealers' homes, who may be involved with the program or may not be. You take that off the street and bring it into a regulated center, which House Bill Thirty-four Sixty describes and regulates, and they regulate the advertising, they regulate where it's going to be. The only thing they don't regulate is the hours. Um, the dispensary owners that I know and have talked to, they're not going to be open at midnight, the normal ones. You might find that in Portland, maybe, but I just don't think that's going to be happening in this community. Um, the, just the pure-out denial of medical marijuana, the voters in Oregon voted for this to be medical medicine. We're not talking alcohol prohibition or anything. This is medicine. There's no medicine in this state or any state in this country that my father fought for that is trying to be regulated like this. It's not like, hey, we can't have OxyContin here in, in, in Clackamas, but you can have it over there. So now, Multnomah's the dirty part of the, this, this area. That's not right. These people deserve access, they deserve safe access, where they know they're coming into a safe access center that's being regulated by the state, that, that can be audited any time, any, they can come in and, and go, hey, we want to check out your records. If you deny them, they'll get a warrant. That's written in House Bill Thirty-four Sixty. I suggest that all the council members read the whole bill again. There's a lot there that you guys are missing. This stuff has already been hashed out and talked about. Now, if you guys need to, to create an extra license for us or, or for people that want to open dispensaries, that's your prerogative, but they've already paid. They've, the state's already regulating all that. You're creating more government. I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bernard?
So you don't have to tell me where these are located, but are there medical marijuana dispensaries that currently exist in Clackamas County?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
But there, right now, as of March third, there's a licensing, state regulation, House Bill Thirty-four Sixty. Until you have that license, you're not legal. And the, the legal gray area before then is just that, a legal gray area. So these people that are applying for the licenses, they're, they're following the rules. They have, they have procedures, policies, they have security, they have twenty-five-thousand-dollar security systems, cameras, twenty of them, thirty of them in a building, uh, recorders. I mean, they have everything. This is about medical marijuana, not recreational marijuana. It, it, you can't... This is about medical marijuana, not recreational marijuana. You can't come in without a card. You can't come in if you're sick and go, hey, I need marijuana. That's not what this is about.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Mike Mullins. I live at 10308 Southeast 96th Avenue, Happy Valley, Oregon. And I'm here in opposition to moratoriums on the medical marijuana facilities. Today's conversation is about medicine, and I've been hearing a lot of information in so-called studies and old studies, as a matter of fact. I've also heard a lot of people talking about their opinions and trying to make it so-called truth, but I'm here to present some qualified studies and would like to speak to the facts. I have sent some emails out last night. I hope those will be entered and utilized here. I've sent a number of pieces of information to you in regards to how dispensaries are good neighbors. There are, in fact, studies being done by the Colorado University, as well as UCLA, that show, in fact, that crime has been decreased in areas with dispensaries. I'm 60 years old. I've been a fifth-generation resident here. My parents and grandparents lived here. My children are raising their children in this fine county. I graduated with honors from our schools. I've been a successful business owner and community member. I was your official consultant for the Americans with Disability Act to bring in the implementation for the Americans with Disability Act for the schools and the county. I am a medical marijuana patient. I oppose the moratoriums. I see this as the same issue as the Americans with Disability Act, providing access, understanding, and civil rights. I understand the reaction the county may be having right now. However, I feel that without having a citizen review panel or plans in place, the preparation of codes to allow for dispensaries, the county's forcing me and thousands of other patients in this county to the streets and back to the black market. Although there is legal, I've already been in the newspaper with you guys in regards to your building codes division for having to get a home occupation permit for my personal grow, where my neighbors were asked if I could, in fact, have my prescription to marijuana. The fact is, here in Oregon, you're given a license from the doctor, a permit, I should say. It's not a prescription. By the way, medical marijuana here in Oregon is Schedule II, not Schedule I, and court instances go according to that here in Oregon. Planning Commission decided that it was improper for them, and they have now new code rules and new administrative rules for dealing with medical patients who grow for themselves. Most patients can't grow for themselves. The average age of the patient is 57 years old. They're given a card and kicked to the curb and told them to go grow your own medicine. Takes time, space, energy. A lot of people don't have the capabilities to do that. Many people die before they get to their medicine. Marijuana is medicine. I'm pleased asking you, I'm asking you today to table this moratorium as other counties in Oregon are doing today, Coos, Cree County, Lynn County, I can give you a number of others. I'm hereby asking you to table this until the needs of the citizen can be taken into account, and ask that you allow us to come to table the suggestions and solutions that work together for sustainable, safe solutions.
Commissioner Smith?
Mike, I got your email last night at 8:10, and it's very, very long, and I have, I read part of it this morning, and I have not been able to read all of it, so I'll get to it later. But I get emails from you, and I get emails from somebody else who just asked me this morning. So if this is medicine, then why isn't it, why can't it be dispensed at a pharmacy?
Well, first of all, there is an issue with that. The pharmacists, I'm sure, would love to deal with this as they go forward, and I'm sure that as someday, as it is accepted as medicine and more, it's a federal issue right now of the Schedule I substance issue with the feds. That is, there is a federal guidance for cities and counties to work with. As long as you're staying within those guidelines, then there is no issue with the federal government. That's already, I've given a copy of that to you, by the way. And I would say that as we go forward, we look for the inclusion of our doctors and scientists to be able to utilize this and to develop it forward. There's no question about it. We work with Oregon Health Sciences University today. They've just finished a qualified blind test study using the oils for chemotherapy and for also very...
We had testimony from a woman a couple of weeks ago who uses oils, who has cancer, and she says it helps her a lot. You know, I'm not necessarily opposed to that because in her particular case, in general, I'm not opposed to medical marijuana.
I sent you two published studies.
Please don't interrupt me, sir. But this is the issue. As District Attorney Foote said, we started out with probably 500 to 1,500 people in Oregon who need marijuana. Now there's at least 50,000. Now, when you go for medicine, as you say, and you get a prescription from a doctor, it's usually for an unlimited amount of time, and then you're cured. But not with marijuana, not with medical marijuana. What I'm seeing is the population growing. I believe it has addictive qualities, and I also think it makes people euphoric and intoxicated. And that's a stand that I will be very firm on. And until we can, maybe it takes the federal government, maybe it takes the FDA, I think I have to be a person in a position to err on safety until we know more. That's where I'm coming from. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Savas, thank you.
So I'm going to ask William, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So you mentioned the difference, a distinction between a dispensary and a licensed dispensary?
Correct.
Okay. So there are non-licensed dispensaries in Clackamas County?
There's documented over 300 dispensaries in the state of Oregon up until March 3rd. March 3rd was a date for people to register their business with the state, and to either fail or to get a license or be denied a license through location, or felony records, or a multitude of things that you could be denied for. So right now, if you're operating and you have not received your license yet, you're still operating in what the Attorney General of this state calls a legal gray area in the law.
So there are licensed ones in Clackamas County?
As far as, have they received their license from the state since March 3rd? I have no idea. I have no idea.
Okay, thank you. So I'm direct my question now to Mr. Madcor. Any of these existing dispensaries, licensed or unlicensed, would they be allowed to continue their operations?
According to our ordinance, if adopted as proposed, no. This is a blanket prohibition. They might have arguments saying that they had grandfathered or vested rights. They were in compliance at the time of their opening, so they would have an argument in that regard. But our ordinance, as proposed, the model ordinance, is worded in such a way that it's a blanket prohibition on medical marijuana facilities within unincorporated portions of Clackamas County. There is no provision for exceptions for existing facilities.
Okay, well, then I'll just, perhaps it was my mistake, but I, my interpretation from the discussion on Tuesday was this would not affect existing facilities. That was my interpretation, but I could be, that could be my mistake.
Well, I don't recall that we, Paul, I don't think we even acknowledged that one existed, just like we were talking about today. You gentlemen came forward. I mean, we're not, I wasn't aware, and maybe staff didn't even know that we have existing facilities in Clackamas County. So we'll discuss that further, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And so, it is, is it Jennifer Valley and Les Poole?
My name is Jennifer Valley. Jennifer Valley, I saw you a couple of weeks ago.
Could you pull that microphone real close to you, Jennifer?
I'll try. I saw y'all a couple of weeks ago, and I'd like to talk about numbers. When the medical marijuana law was passed, the Secretary of State had absolutely no data to base their assumptions on. The only states who had passed already at that point were Washington and California, and they had less than 300 patients. So they said that we might get as many as 500 patients in Oregon. But because our law is based on specific medical conditions, those conditions cover approximately 9 percent of the population of the state. And I know that because I worked extensively with the Oregon Pain Management Commission, and I went through the DHS numbers and crunched them up, and I can demonstrate to you that more than 10 percent of the Oregon population, actually, it's the American population, because we had a court case a couple of years ago, and it was found that out-of-state people can join the Oregon Medical Marijuana Program and don't have to be residents. And I know that several hundred of those have done that over the last two years. In addition, while we're talking about numbers and children and whatnot, I can tell you that in 1968, the SAMSSA surveys found that approximately 30 percent of high school seniors had tried marijuana. But if you look at last year's SAMSSA survey, you will discover that after 40 years of prohibition, 50 percent of American high school seniors have tried marijuana, which means that prohibition has increased teen use by almost 100 percent. So I strongly oppose this moratorium. I've been working really hard for the last eight years on safe access because when my mother was diagnosed, she, I gave her seeds and soil, and before her plants were ready to harvest, she went into the hospital and died. And ever since then, I've been really dedicated to safe access. I think patients deserve to have access close to home that, on the day that they're diagnosed. I was able to reduce my healthcare costs by at least 85 percent. My very first year of the medical marijuana program, I went from 10 ER visits a year and 25 to 35 pills a day, two visits to my doctor that would last two to five hours every time. And last year, I saw my doctor to renew my medical marijuana license. I have not had an ER visit in 14 years. Oh, wait, it's 15 now. And I only take two pills a day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Poole?
Mary. Mary.
I see. I'm trying to start. One second.
Don't worry. Look, start now, Les. The clock hasn't started. Quick.
Thank you. Les Poole, Clackamas County. See, I'm introducing myself the right way. This is a tough one, folks. I've currently got a friend that is using marijuana as a medicine. He's a cancer patient. It would be troubling for him in his condition to have to wait too long for resolution on this. I know we've got a year, but anything the county could do to shorten that, that May deadline, to bring a decision on this, because I believe that we're going to see a ban, you know, at this time. And while I've got mixed feelings about it, I think you really have no choice at this point to at least have a brief ban, because they're going to, they're going to ban them everywhere, and then by default, you're going to see a lot of applications and pressure on the county because you haven't slowed the train down. But the county can be a leader in coming up with a solution here. The county may be able to do something in less time than a year. If they do, you'll be backing those campaign promises that we're going to get things done quicker here, and we're going to be more efficient. Because I think the folks that really need this absolutely need resolution as quickly as possible. The other thing I would ask is that it'd be a good idea if we could get this, this bill that was passed by the legislature posted on the county website, so that folks can go in there and look at it and see what it is. I've glanced at it previously, and the gentleman that spoke earlier was correct. They did address certain aspects of it, including how many can be allowed in a geographic area, something I understand. The last thing is that I've got a lot of the same concerns as Tootie, but there are two different issues here. I ask everyone to turn on the TV tonight and watch a sporting event or watch the news, and tell me how much drug pushing's going on. I mean, it's ridiculous what's going on in our country in general. So, we've got a whole drug abuse problem. We've got a generation with too many people that are victims that don't realize how they got there and are medicated. And sadly, if you're concerned about addiction, boy, there's a lot of things out there that, yeah, you're on forever. And I'm not trying to dismiss what you said, Tootie, but it's pretty obvious, this is here to stay. We need to do something. We need to do something quickly, rather than shoving it out the door April 15th a year from now. So, the last thing I would say is, if I'm hearing things correctly, there currently is some discreet dispensing, dispensary activity going on in this county, and if that's the case, no one in the room seems to even know where they are. So if this is, if this is operated in a low-key manner in the future, rather than with the big naked girl signs and the girls selling scout cookies out front, I think, I think it can be allowed. So let's try and come up with a resolution before another year goes by. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to mention that there are 10 dispensaries that have applied for licenses with the state here in Clackamas County.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Chair Ludo, I was supposed to leave five minutes ago, and staff reminded me I have another appointment. I will be listening and watching the videotape from the testimony here on. As I understand it, we're hearing people today, and we're not making a decision until...
This is, this is a first decision. This is a first reading. We need this decision to go to the second reading. We need a positive decision, or we won't have a second reading. So there will be a decision made today. Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Bernard?
Oh, I just want to add that, actually, Les mentioned that if we didn't do it here, then we'd have a flood of applications. Applications to who? We don't, we don't take applications. So there would not be a flood of applications to Clackamas County because we don't have an application process in Clackamas County. So that actually wouldn't occur, and that's one of my concerns.
And thank you, Commissioner Bernard. And our concern is the unknown. Our concern is we have no regulations as of yet. We think that having some is reasonable. We don't think the public is ready for this. And, you know, as Mr. Poole said, you know, we would hope to resolve this within a year. We have the Association of Oregon Counties working on this, League of Oregon Cities working on this, other counties working on this. And I personally would like some uniformity across counties, so you don't cross over county, oh, they got different rules. No, you can't do it there. You know, we all want uniformity. This is not something that most of the commissioners up here are in favor of, but I think we're even less in favor of recreational use. I think you'll find that later. But we are talking about medical marijuana now. And before we go into the next one, I will tell you that I have been amazed, and I've watched, I watched the Learning Channel, and, you know, great stuff like that. And they've had some extremely interesting examples of how marijuana paste has changed people's lives. I remember a woman, my dad died of Lou Gehrig's disease, particularly heinous disease. He died in 11 months. From the time it was diagnosed, all of his muscles just stopped working. And this one young girl back in New York had been on the pace for 15 years, and she could move, she could do things my father didn't dream of in the 10th month of the discovery of that disease. And there's many more examples, including the testimony by, and she didn't fully say that, but Jennifer Valley, I believe she said she had stage IV cancer. 15 years later, she's still around. So I acknowledge that there are some great benefits undiscovered with this stuff. What we're most concerned, I think, and we'll get to that when the vote time comes, is about our youth and the access to, that was testified by the first several women, the access to youth. We all know that the only marker you can put on these packages of marijuana is keep out of the reach of children. We're precluded from putting anything else on there. You get a pack of cigarettes, what does it say? Don't smoke if you're pregnant. Does contain carcinogens, which we already know the marijuana, smoking of marijuana does. So there's a lot of unknowns here that we need to address, certainly not in the medical. We're not going to be investigators in the medical. But we need to explore a modicum of rules that are reasonable and help prevent access to youth. I believe that there is a great deal of prevention going on now. We hope that continues. But you heard our DA talk about, you know, his concern, especially about the recreational use, that it would turn into a real problem for our youth. Now, Tiffany Hicks and Mac Woods, followed by Jim Johnson and Lindsay Reinhardt, I believe.
Good morning.
Morning.
Shall I go?
Good morning. Go.
I am Tiffany Hicks, and I would like to point out a couple of things to you. First of all, I am a drug and alcohol prevention planner for Clackamas County. I work for the Office of Children, Youth, and Families, and I follow these issues very closely. Before I share what my professional opinion is, I want to address a couple of things that have been said here very quickly. First of all, Commissioner Smith, I really very much appreciate that you pointed out that this is a slow, or maybe quick gateway to recreational legalization, and that is exactly what the prevention community is very worried about. So I appreciate that you recognize that very much. And that you also said that there are addictive qualities to marijuana. And that you also said that there are addictive qualities to marijuana. That is, that is why it is a Schedule I drug federally, because of its highly likely, high likelihood of abuse. Commissioner Savis left, but hopefully he'll get the message, that he had mentioned something about the number of dispensaries in Clackamas County that already exist. I recognize that his concern may be about the business perspective of that, and so I would respectfully just point out that any dispensaries that are already in existence are already out of compliance. They're already acting illegally. And finally, I'd like to share a little bit of my perception or my opinion, I, my background. I've been in law enforcement for thirteen years before coming to Clackamas County to do prevention. I've spent part of that time as a school resource officer, working with youth. I've spent part of that time as a narcotics officer, working undercover and working on narcotics investigations. And a lot of my investigations during that time turned out to be out-of-compliance medical marijuana gardens. In fact, any, any of the gardens that I was allowed to get into through a warrant were all out of compliance. It is almost impossible for these growers to grow within the amount that is allowed by law. There, there's a, an abundance of excessive marijuana. And I point that out because my biggest concern for Clackamas County, for Oregon, is that accessibility to youth. I saw during my days as a school resource officer, repeated times that youth would tell me that they were either getting their marijuana from a, a medical marijuana patient or grower, and sometimes from a friend whose parent was a patient or grower. It became abundant in the schools. I saw this happen with my own eyes. So, I'd also like to bring back the idea, or share with you the idea about social norms and the perception of harm. The perception of harm for marijuana use for youth in this state is way down, and we know scientifically that when the perception of harm is down, use goes up. So, I predict that it will go up, and the more lenient and liberal the laws are about marijuana use and availability, the more those numbers will go up. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
I just want to comment that I, one of the things that I thought was really strange is that I went out on a, a visit, home visit, probation visit, where the person couldn't be around drugs and alcohol, and his roommate had a permit to grow. So, as we walked in with the sheriff's officer, you know, talking to this guy, we just looked over, and all the plants are growing right next to the guy. I mean, it just seemed kind of odd, and then the sheriff can't even do anything about the guy growing the marijuana in the same house as the guy who's not supposed to be around it. I just thought that was rather odd, and that, that was probably the first time I had ever experienced that. So, thank you for your comments.
Mr. Woods?
Clackamas County Commissioners and Chair John Low. Thank you for your patience. Are we having fun hearing you? I just, the big mystery to me is how this is going to tie in with the Obamacare, healthcare bill. As we're nearing election here, whoa, I don't know if I want to vote for Tootie to go for this other seat. I'd kind of like to keep her here. She's doing pretty good. If we don't vote for her to leave, then she gets, then we get to keep her. With that said, whoa, it's nearing election, and we get to vote. Ta-da. I'm, I know how to vote. I don't know anything about marijuana. I've never even smelled it. I don't drink, I don't smoke, I don't cuss, I don't chew, and I don't have any tattoos too, and I don't go out with girls that do. So, there's a lot I don't know about marijuana. I do know that I'm going to vote. I do know that a senator that was a veterinarian here is running for reelection, and we're going to vote this year. He was a good vet, and a lot of people voted for him, but he voted for the Obama healthcare bill. You know, we might send, bring him back to Oregon City to be a vet, what he does best at, and so he can continue doing what he knows best, be a veterinarian, to be the snapper of the little tiny puppies, to snip the little seeds, do what he does best. Thank you.
I think you're talking about a congressman, not a senator.
Is it Congress, whatever he is, he's a veterinarian. Yeah, that one.
U.S. Congressman.
We know his name, we know, well, I can't tell you how I'm going to vote, but I'm going to vote no.
I appreciate that, Mac, very much.
Thank you all for your patience. Are we having fun?
All right, thank you both. And the last two cards I have, so that's the end of the cards. They are Jim Johnson and Lindsay Reinhardt. Well, Jim's been nodding about a lot back there and gesturing, "This is your big chance, Jim, you get three minutes."
Good morning. Actually, I spoke to Jim this morning on the telephone. I worked for Paul Savis in the past. I'm the chairman of the United States Marijuana Party of Oregon. I am a grower and a patient. I'd really like to clear a lot of things up. First of all, cannabis, I call it cannabis, not marijuana, derogatory term, labeled back and wherever. Cannabis has cannabinoids. Our system has a cannabinoid system ready to receptors the cannabinoids in cannabis. THC is the psychoactive cannabinoid. CBD, CBD is the non-psychoactive. If you can actually ingest cannabis without the THC, not get high, wow. I can eat a medical marijuana brownie, drive around town in my car without being stoned. Wow. CBD, check it out. THC, that's what gets you high. They both work. I took ninety milligrams of morphine three times a day. I stopped. Three months it took me to get my Kaiser doctor that I could use medical marijuana. I have no pain right now. Last time I ingested, it was on my vaporized oil that I made at, what time did you pick me up? Eight o'clock. Eight o'clock this morning. So, four hours later, I have no pain in my body. Okay? Works better than morphine with no side effects. Gee, if I take too much, I fall asleep or maybe eat something. Okay? My kids were five-year-old twin boys when I became stepfather. Daughter was thirteen. They knew that cannabis was not for them. They didn't use it, because Dad talked to them about it. Can't we educate our kids? Or do we have to rely on the police to close down dispensaries that are already operating in Clackamas? I go to both of them. Now, what am I supposed to do? Take the bus into Portland? I can hardly walk. But you want to close down my two dispensaries? Man, there's a Fred Meyers and Walgreens and everything on every corner selling morphine. And it's okay for my kids to walk in there, right up to the counter, and watch them dispense morphine, but my cannabis has to be hidden? These are operating dispensaries that you want to close down. Four thousand dollars they've just paid to the state for their license. Five hundred dollars of that is non-refundable. There's three hundred operating dispensaries in Oregon. I know most of them. And you guys want to close down the ones in Clackamas County, so the patients have nowhere to get their medicine. Recreational marijuana is going to happen. Okay? We don't drive around and smoke it. I want to sit home and listen to my stereo and relax. I don't go out in the public and drive around. I've had Clackamas County sheriffs I've talked to, Washington County sheriffs, all the same thing. It's like, you guys just, you know, out there driving around killing my kids. It's like, that's not what we're about. We go home and medicate what we're supposed to.
Commissioner Bernard?
Actually, I had a question. You said you were a grower, too?
Correct.
So, why do you go to a dispensary?
Because it takes four months for my crop to be harvested.
Okay.
And I only raise six plants, which is legal, and there's no reason for me to grow more. And it takes almost ten ounces to make a gram of oil, which I could, it takes about two days for me to go through that.
Wow.
So, you know, what, what do you do? You know, six plants barely covers my medical needs.
So, so my other question is, I thought dispensaries you went to and you actually took the medicine there and then left, right?
That, that's not what's going to happen. All the dispensaries that are going to be licensed will not allow smoking lounges.
Okay, okay. Because there was one in...
They do that now.
The Milwaukee area at one point that I remember opened. It was closed pretty quickly. The other thing, I mean, that, those, great information, I didn't know. I do know about, you know, you can take out the, the intoxicant part of that. If you go to Canada, you can, there are stores around Canada where you can buy, it's amazing what they can do.
Well, it was a big interest. I'm, I have a page, and I have a hundred and sixty-five thousand people following me in twenty-five countries. You know, people are soaking up this information. I just had my pacemaker changed, and I says, "I don't want your OxyContin." I said, "I'll go home and take oil," because the doctor goes, "What?" I said, "I made oil, and I smoked it at nine o'clock this morning. You guys are operating on me in noon without any medication."
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that concerns me about this ordinance is if somebody has applied and received a license, if they have not, you know, I don't have, you know, they're not legal, so...
They're already closing down.
That's one thing we ought to have information...
They're already closing down, the ones that realize that they're probably not going to get it.
Let's review this now. I, I believe the deadline was March fourth.
March third.
March third. So, I doubt very seriously the state has issued anything since that...
They have not. Nobody's gotten their license yet.
Uh, that's not true. There's, there's licenses issued. There's no licenses issued, to my knowledge, in Clackamas County, but there have been licenses issued from...
I'm just kidding, this is rubbery. I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, wait a minute. We are done with you, sir, and thank you for your information and your advocacy. Let me get a quick answer from our Clackamas County staff as to that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. As I said, I've been following this very closely, and I know that during the month of March, when they were, when the legislature was working, or the month of, month of February, when they were working on deciding if they, what they were going to do with Senate Bill fifteen thirty-one, and we got to fifteen thirty-one C with all of the amendments, and fifteen thirty-one C is the one that allowed cities and counties specific, with the specific language, to do the moratorium. That when they enacted that, at that time, they also put into place provisions for refunds for those folks who had already put their money forward and paid for it. So, they, so the state is prepared to give a refund to those licensees that, that, that had got them already.
Thank you for that clarification, Tiffany. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Lindsay Reinhardt. I'm new here to Happy Valley. I represent the International Women's Cannabis Coalition and statewide patients. I'd like to address what she just said first off. Just because they're, they're able to get a four thousand dollar refund doesn't mean that some of these business owners haven't spent thousands of dollars remodeling their locations in order to comply with state law. So, that's, that's first off. Second of all, I'm hearing a lot of fear, and I think that the best way to, to, you know, squash fear is through education. And so, I would really urge everyone in this room, because I have heard so much mass misinformation, to please read thirty-four sixty, and also, please read Senate Bill fifteen thirty-one and the ORSs that go with them. In order to make an educated, informed decision, all of the information is necessary. And having this discussion, when so many people in this room have not read what we're discussing, almost seems counterproductive. When, when opinion is being presented as fact, and fact is being presented as opinion, we have something seriously wrong. But bottom line, the, the words of OMA, the beginning of the law here in ninety-eight, was "We, the people of Oregon, recognize that this is medicine, and we are enacting this into law." The voters spoke here in nineteen ninety-eight, saying that this is medicine. I have multiple sclerosis. I moved here from a different state in order to obtain medical cannabis, and I have to have it. It keeps this disease in remission for me. So, I am off of these drugs that they would keep me on for my life. I have to be on a disease-modifying drug to keep my disease in remission. Without that drug, I can't walk, I can't talk, I can't swallow, I can't hug my children because my skin is on fire. This is a very uncomfortable truth. I cannot use the bathroom, because they put me on morphine, Vicodin, Baclofen, gabapentin, this list is twenty-two pills long. I moved here in August from Idaho, and I do not take pills anymore, none. I would have been on those pills my entire life. They would have killed me. You don't die from MS. You die from secondary illnesses. You die from infections. You die from complications of your liver and your kidneys, from the drugs that they give you, killing you, giving you cancer, and doing something really scary, eating your brain, and it's irreversible on the disease, on the drugs that they put me on. And now, also, we should address that I'm a parent, and these patients in this room, we are parents, and we want to protect our youth, too. So, saying that, you know, just because we have medical cannabis, we don't want to protect our youth, we don't want them to get it, and find me one dispensary that would actually issue cannabis to a child that was not a medical patient registered with this state. And regardless of the numbers of patients in this state, fifty thousand, sixty thousand, whatever the number may be, that was a decision made between that patient and their doctor and is not up to be judged by city councils around the state. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Do you have any questions? No, I have no questions for you. What I will say this is, you mentioned that you're hearing a lot of fear. Well, what I'm hearing is a lot of anger directed at me because I took a stand, which I believe represents an overwhelming majority of voting citizens in Clackamas County. As I said in my opening statement today, we would not be addressing this issue had it not been for the state legislature. If you want to change, and if you want the law to be different, if you want your facilities to be legal, then you need to change the law in Salem. What we're charged here with to do...
Now, let me just make a point here, ladies and gentlemen. You will find, the way I run meetings is very patiently. Could you please not make comments during the commissioner's testimony? Thank you.
I also find it as an observation here today that those people who are taking marijuana are a little bit out of control and are exhibiting a great deal of anger towards us. And I would say to you, you're not making your case well today by shooting the messengers, so to speak. So, you might want to think about that in future discussions. But what I'm about to say is, we are dealing with a law that we are charged to deal with. It would, if we had a choice, we would not be doing this, but we don't have a choice. But you know, as elected leaders in this county, that's what we do. We make the really hard decisions, and we go forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you could just give one more...
No, you cannot. I mean, seriously, well, no, seriously, may I, all right, shall I recess the meeting until we can get order? I mean, ladies and gentlemen, we'll be glad to collect your information. We will continue to do so, I, I know Cindy. And we will continue to do so as this moratorium period up to a year goes by. We will gather the information, and we're not insensitive to the fact, insensitive the fact that this is helping many people. And I, I know you think it's disingenuous for us to worry about the children. We have a right to do so, and in fact...
(noise)
All right.
Let's recess.
Ladies, we're going to, we're going to recess the meeting until we can gain control. Realtors, I had a lovely chat with the people who were talking during our meeting. I think we've settled it out, that we will gather a great deal of information the coming year, and hopefully less. You know, there is no guarantee that if we pass this moratorium, it would be for the full year. We're going to work aggressively, like I said, with the AOC, the LOC, the legislature of the state, and certainly with our sheriff and others to, to really implement this thing the right way. There are a lot of unanswered questions, and we probably have a great deal of them. It is reasonable to ask us if we have read the document. Most of us have glanced through it, but we've had a, a staff report on that. We will, to implement this thing, because it is a very complicated law, we will take the time as necessary to do that, in the event we pass this today. And to back clean up today, is a familiar face. The last card I have is Cindy Lewis-Wolfram.
Thank you, Chair Ledlow, Cindy Lewis-Wolfram, Unincorporated, Clackamas County. I am here because I am not a, a medical user. I know several medical users, but I'm not one of them yet. I took exception to what I heard from Commissioner Smith. She's allowed her opinion, but Commissioner Smith, you stated something to the effect, probably not quoting you exactly, that you get medicine, you get cured by medicine, and then you're done with it, and that this doesn't seem like medicine to you. I've been on medicine now for over thirty years. It has not cured me. There is no cure for my disease. I suffer from nerve pain throughout my body daily because of this disease. And I'm now listening to these people here today, hearing something that may cure me, not cure me, excuse me, ease my condition, where I won't have to take painkillers, which make me lose exactness. You also... take painkillers, which make me lose exactness. You also said something to the effect that there's a bunch of anger here today. When you're talking about your physical well-being, and you finally succeed at getting a law passed that will allow for medicine to take care of that physical well-being, and then the fears of officials, instead of taking on a proactive way of dealing with it, come up with a stop way of dealing with it, can be rather disheartening, and can make you anxious. I hear anxiety, Commissioner, not anger. Anxiety produces a lot more elevation of voice than anger does sometimes. And I hear a lot of anger here politically, a lot. And I don't hear your calming attempts to those people. I would encourage you to do so. I would also ask the commission to please take a look before you pass this, and find a way to adjust your timing. A year is a long wait. If you're going to put this on moratorium, I would ask that you grandfather in any applicants for license, since there seems to be no way for the true number of approved licenses to be noted. I would suggest that you grandfather those applicants who have applied as of today to be grandfathered into, so that people are not deprived of what they have to ease their pain and to help their conditions. If people are following the rules put forward by 3460, if they're following the rules in those applications, we ought to at least work cooperatively with them as we look over this processing. So I would ask, as you look towards approving the moratorium, that the moratorium not include those who have applied for state licensure as of today. Thank you, sir.
Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
So the motion's been made by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Bernard to read the ordinance by title only and move for its approval. Commissioner Bernard?
First, I, my understanding is that we could take the initial full year, or we could come back and adjust that, should more information be provided to us. Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner. Legislature's giving you up to one year, and it could be less if you wanted it to.
Yeah. I actually have sat through a number of formal meetings at AOC on this issue, and I'm attending a marijuana forum later this month. And I hope you guys register too, because I believe this is an anti-one, and maybe you guys should show up. I think it's a disservice to our community to not take some time to look at this issue further. I'm not afraid of marijuana dispensaries. I'm not afraid of any of that. I'm just concerned that we should have the ability to say where you can be in Clackamas County, and every, and so I think that, and what the hours are. And that's the only thing I'm interested. I'm more than happy to participate in a group that looks at this issue, and I'd be more than happy to be educated. And first off, we have until the 17th, right, to make that second reading and become the law. And so that's an opportunity. And then we have time within the next few months to consider, are there any changes we want to make, whether that's maybe what somebody who has a license already, which my understanding is that's unlikely. And then, but our law enforcement people are the ones who are telling us, there's fear, a lot of fear out there, about what legalizing marijuana, not only for medical reasons, but in general, legalizing marijuana, could cost us as a county to enforce. And some of that concern also goes to medical dispensaries, because we don't have any control over that if the state is licensing them. And so we need some ability to, you know, know who those people are, so we can make sure that they're following the rules and it's being enforced. Because I can assure you, the state's not coming down and enforcing them. They're not. That would be our job. So we need some time to look this over. So I'm going to support this today and look into it further, and commit to looking into this ordinance, looking into this bill further, and, you know, making a decision sometime in the near future, whether to continue the, delaying this decision, or making some adjustments on the way. But that's all of us. I think that we'll be looking at what we do today and considering whether it was the right decision, whether we should make an adjustment to it in the near future.
Commissioner Smith?
I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Bernard said here today. If you folks had listened to our study session yesterday, the, yesterday, our study session yesterday, it was stated, and we directed staff during this one-year period to prepare things for us that we could look at in the future in the event that this issue comes forward. Just because we pass a one-year moratorium does not mean we are ended on this issue. Go back and listen to those tapes. I support the one-year moratorium as a timeout. So we have time to decide what we want to do in the event the legislature reconvenes and passes this permanently. I think the moratorium is very important. I have talked to people in the community who cannot even believe that the county commissioners are considering legalizing dispensaries, whether it's for medical purposes or not, because their next thought, this is an end around of legalizing an illegal substance. And I will stick to my opinion that a majority, an overwhelming majority of voters in this county, is not ready for this. We have heard today from a very, very loud, and I would say uncontrolled, people who are users and who want to have eventually this legalized. And you've come forward, you've offered me a good tongue lashing, and good for you. But as I have said before, we are charged with the legislature to do a certain action, and I think a one-year moratorium, taking some time to look at this, gathering information, gathering research on this, is what a lot of the counties in this state are doing. And to do anything less would be not performing my duty as a county commissioner. Thank you.
You know, what I've seen today is not anger. It's angst. It's fear. Anytime you're talking about, and people can debate ad nauseam, the possible medical attributes of some derivative of cannabis. I've been corrected it's not marijuana. But the fact of the matter is, is there's been plenty of studies. It does have a positive effect for a lot of people. So here are these people here today, and they're saying, "I'm afraid I'm not going to be medicated to where I can exist. I can survive on a daily basis." And there's more than just the people in this room that are in that situation. I acknowledge that. Please be patient with us. We're not mandated by the state to cause a one-year moratorium. I think fiduciarily, we are required to judiciously and slowly and carefully develop the rules, regulations, signage, manner of operations with all of your input. That's what we feel we are, want and necessary to do. So please be patient with us on this, because I think that we will work it out. We may work it out earlier than the year, but our concern is that the 2015 legislature is going to come up, and they're going to tweak some things, I think. And so, simply because of input by counties and cities about this. Although the 2015 legislature may have their hands full with more than just the medical marijuana question, if the recreational use ballot passes in November, they'll have their hands full worried about that more than medical marijuana. And I think that that would be probably an action-packed and lively discussion about how to dispense recreational-use marijuana. You all know that, and the rules of the state that's given for it are a little bit broad at times. Again, hours, manner of operation, signage. I mean, shoot, if the signage was small, but the entire building was done in like the cornrows produce, you know, pictures of pot and bud and whatever, it would be interesting. So these are things we have to take on. Understand this, for me, this is much more, and I know what you say, why should we fear about the youth, etc.? You've heard our professionals testify, that the acceptability as to the minimum supposedly harm of marijuana. And we're not talking about the extract that you take that had the THC removed. We're talking about just pot, right? That is a grave concern of ours. We have many 501(c)(3) organizations working on that. We have our county working on it through Health Housing Human Services. We will continue to help those people, to help those youth that are in trouble with a fairly addictive drug. So, you know, some people call it a gateway drug. Remember, I'm a child of the 50s and 60s. What's the old adage? "If you remember the 60s, you weren't there." So, you know, I have seen all of it, from friends who've been experimenting with LSD and peyote buttons and everything. So, but the bottom line is, is I've never heard in any of those actually helping somebody's back problems, digestive concerns, helping them to walk. And we hear that from testimony today, I know, from the research I've read, and some of my favorite television shows about this, that it does make a difference for people. And how many is a good question, because there's a large hesitancy out there to actually step into using a product from cannabis because of the stigma that's been attached with that ever since I've been a child. And so I think we have work to do on education, certainly an understanding of the bill, and our limitations and our opportunities. So Commissioner Bernard?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing. I believe county code regulates the percentage of signage on a building, but they, we cannot regulate what's on the sign. I think it's unconstitutional. So that's some concern that, you know, we'll have to look at. Anyway, that's it.
Are we ready for the poll today?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I'm just asking them. It looks like we are. Yes, go ahead, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ledlow?
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, it passed us 3-0 on the first reading. We had the option of making this an emergency ordinance, which we wouldn't have a second public hearing, and we will have a second public hearing. Let me tell you about that.
Chair Ledlow?
Oh.
I need to assign a number and read the ordinance.
Oh, of course you do. I wasn't following my script. The motion is approved, a 3-0. I asked clerk to assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
Hey, this is going to be Ordinance 01-2014, and Ordinance Amending Title VI Public Protection of the Clackamas County Code and Amending Section 6.12 Declaring a Moratorium on Medical Marijuana Facilities and Declaring an Emergency.
Thank you. And again, that hearing will be April 17th, which is an evening business meeting. And just like today and right now, there will only be three commissioners there. In order to pass business for this commission, you must have three positive votes, not just three in attendance. So we will have those people available, one of which is not going to be there is raising his hand as we speak.
So my, the last word, emergency, declaring emergency, is that right?
No, we're not.
Yes.
If you were to pass the ordinance on the second reading on the 17th, we would ask that you declare an emergency so it's effective immediately. Otherwise, it would be effective after 90 days, which is typical by state statute. You could, in a single reading, declare an emergency and have it effective immediately if you had five, if you had unanimity among them.
I actually understand that. It's just that when she read the ordinance by title only, the last word was declaring an emergency.
The title.
That is correct. That's the title. Yes. And so, again, if you want it effective immediately on May 1st, when the legislature has given you the deadline, May 1st, it would be effective if you approved it on the 17th.
I emphasize to the public, this is an opportunity, whether you're watching on TV or here in the audience, a lot of you have had some certainly concerns, and you have ideas. If you have ideas about the usage, signage, you know, things that we may regulate here in this county, and they're doing in other counties too, I'm sure you're monitoring those, then bring those forward to the commission. Because in all probability, this is going to pass. There's a distinct possibility we could shorten this, but it depends on November, I will tell you that. It depends on the input we get from people who are involved on both sides, on how we, how we put this, the usage of this, the implementation of this law into force and effect. So I encourage you to put your input in by writing preferably to the commission. We will forward it to the proper departments, probably legal counsel, and certainly with our other staff that we'll be studying this issue with, including Health Housing Human Services. We will entertain all options for enforcement. Commissioner Bernard?
So my question is, the date, the 17th, couldn't we also, could we move this to the 24th?
I would rather prefer that.
I don't know that all the commissioners will be here. I think we have to, if we're going to change a date, we have to go back, don't we, Mr. Madcor?
Nope. You just have to announce it today, when the second reading is going to be. Again, it has to be 13 days apart, and that's how we got the 17th, and it would give you ample opportunity if there were changes on the 17th, and you needed, let's say, a third reading. If there were substantive changes, it might need another hearing again. I'm not anticipating that happening. We scheduled it in a manner that it would be adoptable by the 1st, but you certainly, anytime before the 1st.
The only thing I don't like about that is, one of the reasons we hold 19 meetings is because it avails a time to the public where they are more available. And if we're going to have a public hearing, I appreciate all the people who've taken their time here to show up today, and we certainly want to hear from you. And we definitely want to hear from you in an evening meeting, all those who are just watching right now or here about this coming meeting. So, you know, if it is the preference of the majority of the three of us, now, of course, we're not taking a vote per se, so we can, just between the three of us.
Well, Mr. Chair, if you want full participation of the BCC, the 24th would be the date. And when I scheduled, and probably Jim too, on the 17th, we didn't realize
No, you didn't.
this issue was going to be on the 17th, because it just came at us as fast as can be. So, you know, we had made plans two months. Our schedules go months out, so.
Well, Mr. Madcor, you have talked about when this ordinance could be enacted in an emergency form, and it demands that there be unanimous consent of the commissioners available that day. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, in the event, let me set this scenario, in the event on either the 17th or the 24th, it was not unanimous, tell me when it would go into force and effect.
I'm sorry, if we wanted it effective immediately on one reading, it would be unanimous.
Oh, good point.
If you, during the second reading, 13 days apart.
It can be split.
Yes.
Absolutely. Better definition. Thank you. All right. So we have to decide. I like it full, you know, oftentimes I have moved the schedule of the agenda to accommodate commissioners' other work, and it is always desirable to have all the duly-elected officials involved in these decisions, and certainly on the information gathering from those who had come before us. So unless it's disagreeable by the rest of the commission, I will order that this second reading be done on the 24th. But remember this, that leaves us a very, very narrow time. This must be in force and effect by May 1, or we don't get the one year. Correct?
Correct.
All right. So is that your preference?
What also gives more time.
That's a morning meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
What also gives more time for our constituents to bring in information. So, I mean, you know, we had several emails saying, well, we need more time, we need more time. We're giving them an extra week, so.
Yeah. All right. So the... Yeah. All right. So the next public hearing on this matter, the second reading, will be on April 24th at our regular 10:00 a.m. business meeting, correct?
Yes.
All right. So you're not leaving yet. We have, wait a minute, we got the big business here.
That's right. You have a consent.
You're leaving the meeting ends right now. Thank you again, ladies and gentlemen. Everybody took their time to come here today and tell us, "Ah, man, I don't know." What do you want to say? If we move it to 24th. Yes. We can change by amendment. Yes, we can. Correct, Mr. Madcor?
You could. You'd probably have to read the entire ordinance as opposed to just title only.
Which is really fun. And Mary's can't wait to do that.
She'll do it.
I can't, we can't carry on more conversations from the back. If you have a specific question about the process, I'd encourage you to talk to Mr. Madcor right after the meeting. Thank you. All right. Now we get into the consent agenda. I'll ask clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a project memorandum of agreement with Western Federal Lands Highway Division for the OR Clackamas 37005 Low-Low Pass Alternative Study. Under Central Communications, CCOM, approval of an intergovernmental agreement for the Metropolitan Area Joint Computer-Aided Dispatch System with the City of Lake Oswego Communications and Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency. Under elected officials' approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under the Tourism and Cultural Affairs Office, a resolution supporting efforts to establish a Willamette State Heritage Area and urging designation of such by the Oregon Heritage Commission. Under Business and Community Services, a board order approving the Clackamas County Public Oral Auction to disperse tax foreclosed and surplus properties on May 14, 2014. And underwater environment services, approval of a construction agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and steadler supply and construction for the Kellogg Creek WPCP Primary Clarifier Number One Rebuild Project. And that concludes the consent agenda.
I'll ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard and seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? I'll ask clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. It passes 3-0. County Administrator update?
Well, Mr. Chair, given the hour, I'm going to forgo my remarks for this afternoon.
All right. Commissioner Bernard on commissioners' communication.
I'm also, due to the hour, going to...
You guys are trying to force me to shut up here. I know it. I just know it. All right, Tudy.
I agree. We've gone on long today, and I'll give an update next week.
I'm not. I have specific things to say.
You go, Mr. Chair.
Very briefly, we had a fantastic strategic agenda retreat. It was for probably a total of 15 hours over two days. It was more than that, 16 hours or so. It was facilitated by a husband-and-wife team who did an excellent job. And I want to emphasize something to you, that some report is extremely rare, and that is us voting 5-0 for anything. Well, the fact is, we vote 5-0 on a lot of things. And specifically, I will point out that the strategic plan, over 15 hours, was arrived at through a lot of consensuses. There was no votes, because we didn't advertise we were going to take any votes. But there was shaking of the heads up and down as to particular direction we want to take this county into, and they were all, all of them were 5-0 decisions. So we all believe that every commissioner up here has the best interests of the county in mind. Now, we disagree philosophically on some issues, but we get along enough to do the county's business without any discord, truly. So any comparison to us and the former Clackamas River water is ridiculous. We get a lot done at this commission, and it's evidenced by our work sessions, especially our work sessions, where we get a great deal of work done in doing the county's business. I went to a meeting last night organized by the Oak Grove Community Council. Several of you in the audience were there. And also the Clackamas CPO and the Jennings Lodge CPO. It was monitored by Jim Martin, the chair of Oak Grove County Community Council, who did a great job. Because it's about 65 people there, I think, and there were some people still pounding the drum, "We want our own library." And yet Gladstone, remember, Gladstone has to carry the load of debt. And that should be well acknowledged, and we all should know that they are in the driver's seat. They're trying for the second time to put a ballot measure forward. The county has set a deadline of June 30th on that, and we are monitoring the situation and communicating with Gladstone and their advisory board, and eventually their council as to their direction. We will do the right thing based on the measure that passed creating this district in 2008. That is the IGAs that currently exist, is that there will be an opening of the Gladstone Library. And when that happens, it says in the IGA, it's said in the information forwarded to voters in 2008, then the Oak Lodge Library will close. Now, we talked about service, we talked about a lot of things, but my confidence also to the city manager of Gladstone did a great job in presenting their conundrum and their possibilities as to how to go forward. The last thing I want to mention is, oh, goodness gracious, where's my notes? Oh, I'm lost. I was asked to speak to the TRIMET Board of Directors the other day. It was just, I was just excited about doing that. And at that time, I told the board, "Listen, Clackamas County Commissioners will have on their agenda later this year. The question of, can we do it better, faster, and cheaper than what you're doing?" TRIMET got $37 million this year from our businesses. $37 million. Now, I personally think a little of that money is too centric to Portland. And the question is, this next year, since it'll be $39 million that they take from our businesses, are we getting that? And just like Sandy and Camby and Molalla and Wilsonville, who have done it better, faster, and cheaper, can we do that? Now, I wouldn't say that the TRIMET Board was happy to hear that. But the fact of the matter is, is again, we have five other cities saying, "We'd like to at least observe, if not participate in, your study to see if it can be done better, faster, and cheaper." So I look forward to that when we work with our cities and do the analysis to see if there's a better model out there that can better serve the populace of Clackamas County. We all know that TRIMET doesn't cover all of this county, only a portion of same. And yet, there are people, and like I testified to them, Colton, up by the Mountain Express, a lot of areas of Clackamas County do not have any bus service. And we think that for the transportation of people, especially those in need, vulnerable citizens, seniors, that we need to have a good bus system. In Wilsonville, they have dial-a-ride. "You need a ride? They're going to come pick you up at the door." I know that sounds outlandish and unreal, you know, how is that possible? But it's working, and they're doing it a lot cheaper than TRIMET could. So we all know that TRIMET's encumbered with debt and promises. What we need to do is find out, and it'll be a legislative fix, ladies and gentlemen. It's not something that Clackamas County Board of Commissioners can cure. We will go for it and find out if we possibly can do it, and we will go to the legislature for a possible fix. But there's a little time in between all of that, when we'll have to study this issue, certainly take in all of the negatives as well as the positives on how this could happen. But I'm looking forward to when Clackamas County will not be having severed routes, and will be having routes that we add on to, to better serve our citizenry. Real quickly, I went to the, I'm part of the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization. We had a meeting on Friday. We went over their continued existence now that, you know, the homeland security money is dwindling. We all know, we are not an island, Clackamas County. And in the event, we had a big one, whether it be a flood, hurricane, or slides, etc., that we will be reaching out to our partners, our regions, our cities, and saying, "Do you have this?" And the coordination of just that kind of information, who has the equipment, who has the bodies, is incredibly important. A quick example of how important this is, is FEMA will reward us up to 90% of our expenditure to clear roads. But we have to do it within a very prescribed tight period of time, and we have to have pre-designated the areas where we will dump and sort this debris. Usually, it's a large paved area, by the way, so schools are susceptible. But in case of a big one, we have to have these places planned out. So a lot of information from that organization, I want to thank in our organization Nancy Bush, and she is heading up an initiative that I've helped create to where we will get our employees ready for the big one. Because as often been talked about, remember the veterans a little earlier? They said the veterans will feel much better to do their job when they know their family's taken care of. It is not dissimilar in case of a disaster. We have employees we desperately need to help our citizens of Clackamas County. We will not see them unless they know their family is taken care of. So there's 50 people in this first class to better prepare themselves and their family in case of interruption. Frankly, the family comes first, we acknowledge that. But as far as second, we'd like to have them back to work in those critical situations. This is not dissimilar to what PGE has done and other utilities in disaster training. So that's probably enough for me. Goodness gracious, oh, oh my gosh, thank you. Oh, and my, yeah, all the stuff that Mary just passed up here, I guess I saw it, that's fine. All right. I'll just mention our next town hall, which is coming up real soon, next Wednesday, at the Sandy Community Center, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., located at 38348 Pioneer Boulevard Sandy, hosted by the Sandy Chamber of Commerce. Also, the Clackamas County Veterans Service Office. Oh, forgot that one. Okay. Okay, well, let's go to that one. I already did that one.
Yeah, you did.
Okay. The Clackamas County Veterans Service Office will be closed the week of, it's closed right now. Oh, actually, through the 3rd, today is the 3rd. Last day it's closed.
Yeah, I went up there today. They're open.
They're all open. So they have moved the Clackamas County Veterans Service Office is now in this building where we stand, in the public service building, 2051 Kane Road, Suite 281, second floor, Oregon City. The phone number remains the same as 503-650-5631. I got a different order here, didn't I? All right. Last one is Stand Up 2014. You've heard the commissioners all say their allegiance to the veterans. This is a celebration of the families, and certainly what they've given, what they've sacrificed, and what they've gone through, and to entertain and educate the rest of us as to what those sacrifices are. As I've mentioned before, there's going to be a tremendous balloon tire guy up there that entertains the kids, makes them a little wilder, makes my day. Anyway, I believe now that is, yes, that is all that I have here today. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you showing up today, and certainly for those who are watching for putting up with us. We will now adjourn this meeting. Thank you.